Everybody, are we ready to get going? We have a full house. Director Lowry is going to be joining us by video. Welcome, everybody. Thank you to Peninsula Elementary students for these amazing postcards. They're gorgeous. I can't wait to use them. Thank you to the students there. The board meeting of the Board of Education for February 22, 2022, that's five twos in a row, two, twenty-two, twenty-two, is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. The meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening, everybody. It's really great to see you here. Tonight, we're pleased to have our meetings open to the public, so it feels really good to be in community with you all. I'd like to remind everybody that we continue to follow Governor Kate's statewide indoor mask requirement for all indoor public meetings, whether vaccinated or not. And tonight, we have in place mitigation strategies to keep everyone safe. That's staff and members of the public. Board members and staff in attendance are wearing masks, and we have air purifiers placed in the boardroom. And it doesn't look like anybody's distancing, but maybe we're at the point where it doesn't matter so much anymore. Recommended, you know, distance from one another. Just be aware of your surroundings and do your best to, you know, stand apart to the best of your ability. And a reminder that we want to keep aisles clear. If you're holding a sign, to keep it low, as so not to block the view of those sitting around you. So the board will now vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items that you'd like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for the end of, to discuss at the end of the meeting, or vote at the end of the meeting. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I'll take a, I like to make the first motion since on this day.
A motion is second to adopt the consent agenda. Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Green, sorry, you seconded this time.
That's all right.
Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? And Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Great, so the board will now vote on Resolutions 6447 through 6449. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We'll now turn to student and public comment. Before we begin, I want to review the guidelines for public comment. First, I thank you, and the board thanks you for taking the time to come and attend this meeting tonight and providing your comments. Public import, input informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts and your reflections and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen into that, and I would ask each of us to give our full attention to the people in front of us. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees, please be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. And if you have additional materials or items that you'd like to share to provide the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net, publiccomment@pps.net. You'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll hear a sound after three minutes, which means it's time to conclude your comments. And because I believe we have a lot of testimony, I'd really appreciate people adhering to that three minutes and taking your space and then letting other people speak after you, if you would. So, Ms. Bradshaw?
Yes, we'll start with student comment. We have Dubai Doche. Do we have Dubai Doche?
Dubai Doche? Are you here?
Okay. Can you hear me better now? There we go. Michael Hunker.
Hi, Michael.
Hello.
Do you want to state your name and then spell your last name for us, please?
Uh, yeah, my name is Michael, last name Hunker, H-U-N-K-E-R.
And you can start whenever. We'll start the timer when you start talking. You have three minutes, so you can just tell us what's on your mind.
Okay. Hello, my name is Michael Hunker. I'm in sixth grade at Kellogg Middle School. I'm here to speak on behalf of the DLI program, Staying at Kellogg. When I was in fifth grade, I was nominated by my teachers to be on the Kellogg Student Advisory Board. This was a huge honor for me. I was asked to shape the future of Kellogg as it was opening. You wanted the student voice, and because I was nominated, I was passionate to make Kellogg a safe space for all nationalities and races of our students. I was able to help create a club for students like me, Black. We meet every Tuesday and talk about Black leaders and Black history makers. It was the best thing I ever joined. Looking forward to continuing this group. Kellogg has shaped me to use my voice for the students. I'm here tonight to try to convince you to keep the DLI program at Kellogg. What I like about Kellogg is that it's state-of-the-art. Diversity flows like a mighty river, and there are more Black and Brown students to talk and relate with. If we move the DLI program from Kellogg, it would be inequitable and unfair to the Spanish-speaking communities surrounding Kellogg. Our diversity makes us Kellogg strong. I want to tell you a story about a Spanish-speaking student that attends Kellogg that I have the honor and privilege of speaking for tonight. This is, Spanish is his language that he speaks at home. He's working hard to learn English, but he needs a lot of support to get there. In one of my classes that is English-only, the student needs a lot of support to figure out what to do. Whenever the teacher talks, I do my very best to translate it for him and tell him what's happening in class. When he seems to get, when he seems to get behind, I will stop and catch up with him. And to think, if I didn't have such a strong DLI program there, I wouldn't be able to help the student. I hope in the future, he'll be able to speak fluently in English, and I will be there to help him.
Yeah.
Now, I'd like to teach you some words in Spanish. One, escucha tu comunidad. That means, listen to your community. The community is saying to keep the DLI program at Kellogg. I hope that you all, that are trying to move the DLI program, change their mind. Two, justicia para todos, which means justice for all. Moving the DLI program isn't giving justice for all, but only favoring those in the English program. Those in the DLI program deserve the school just as much as anyone else in the school. By removing the diversity, you are showing no justice to our community of color. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Mr. Hunker, for speaking with us. It's really great to hear from students. It's really great to hear from African-American students in particular that we don't see very often. So, thank you so much for your testimony tonight. You did great.
We have Priya Podichetty.
Oh, these are way too spinny. Sorry.
We have the same problem.
Could you pull the microphone down? And can you please say your name and then spell your last name, please?
My name is Priya Podichetty, P-O-D-I-C-H-E-T-T-Y.
You can start whenever you're ready. You have three minutes to speak.
My name is Priya Podichetty. I am a fourth grader at Ricky Elementary. I'm here because I want, because, because you guys, because, um, because you guys, to stop from cutting art in half, uh, cutting art. My art teacher, Miss Jill, is a great art teacher. She makes art exciting and enjoyable. She makes Ricky a better place, and it would not be the same without her help. When I was only five or around that age, she got us an exhibit at the Portland Art Museum. Me and my peers got to show an art project we were working on. She has inspired me to do tons of different pieces of art in school and on my own time. Even when we were in online during COVID-19, she still kept art interesting and fun for us. And if you take, if you take a lot of, a big chunk of art away, it still might not stay at Ricky. Her students will, her students really appreciate her, and we would be very displeased if she has to go to another school. This year, even though tons of bad things have happened, she's still kind and patient with all of us. We might think that art is just about drawing or coloring or painting, but Miss Jill takes it to another level. We go deep into the background of what we were working on. This year, we have worked for a long time on watercolor Oregon landscapes. We learned about the landscapes and the Native Americans that once owned all that land. Art helps our fine motor skills, and some people struggle with fine motor skills. Art helps them. Art is a creative outlet. If you are having a hard day, you can just lose yourself in art. Before I finish, I also want to mention the impacts of taking away one day of P. Coach V will, might have a cramped schedule and not have her usual energy for all of us. So Ricky needs full-time art and PE for the students to get, get a lasting. I, I wanted to show, um, this got a little bent, but, sorry. So, because, you know, it's wire, but this is what we were working on when I was in kindergarten. Now I'm in the fourth grade and I'm nine, so this is what we were working on.
That is incredible. A piece of sculpture there.
And there's some other things I worked on at home over COVID-19, like this one.
You can finish up.
Like this one, and, and this one that I did with my dad.
Beautiful.
Thank you. And this one, too.
Those are beautiful. Thank you for sharing those. I have art in my purse as well, but I'm not going to bring it out because it's a serious meeting, but I have a piece of art in my purse right now, and I carry it with me. So I think I really appreciate you sharing your, your work with us.
Next, we have Danny Cage.
Danny.
It is roly. I think firstly, before anything, I just want to honor the fact that we had two amazing, young, Black and Brown children come up and speak. I think that's, I think that's amazing, especially from communities who we don't see for, and having communities talk for themselves. Without, without further to do, good evening. As all our directors know, I'm Danny Cage. I'm a Grant High School student and the district student council rep for Grant as well. I'm here to talk about potential staffing cuts, which I'm sure we've all seen and heard by now. This news was shocking and devastating, since our education system is still recovering from the devastating effects of the pandemic that the pandemic has had in our school system, or the fact that PPS has received more federal funding. Yet the district is still talking about cutting staff. I have said it before, and I will say it again, there is a direct correlation between the funding and supports of our teachers and schools and the academic well-being of our students. This can, these cuts can be simply described as education cuts. We are not at a time where cutting teachers and/or staff simply makes sense. Quite frankly, I am concerned for our students. I am concerned for the students I represent for the district at Grant, which is an overcrowded school where educators struggle as is. I am concerned about the effects that these education cuts can have at schools that are already systemically struggling due to racism and lack of investment, which is even more drastically impacted by these decisions. But it doesn't have to be this way. I know, I have sat in a room with district staff, board members, and community putting their heads together to create amazing policies for our students. I have seen district staff squeeze every last resource into an issue and work with our amazing educators to help our students. I believe that this is a decision that we can rethink and change. I believe that PPS, when pushed, can make correct decisions. As a person who sits in our classroom all day, as a Black student who knows firsthand that the impact of school funding has on me and my fellow peers, as a representative for our students, that I can say unapologetically no to unnecessary staffing cuts. But the question, but the question still raises, will PPS be brave enough to follow me and my community's lead? Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
We have Tim Leahy. Do we have Tim Leahy?
Is it Leahy?
Leahy. All right. Noreen Smokey Smith. Grace Groome.
Hello. Grace Groome, last name spelled G-R-O-O-M. I'd like to start with asking in the audience, if you have someone in your school who is being cut or planning to be cut, please stand. This is the impact of the decisions that this board is making. Thank you for hearing my testimony tonight. I'm the mother of two Portland Public Schools students and have the honor of serving as a second-grade teacher at Markham Elementary in southwest Portland. I'm testifying tonight to share my grave concerns about our leadership's budget framework for next school year. We are not facing a budget shortfall next year. We have a budget surplus. Our district will have more funds to spend on each of our students next year than this year. You have the opportunity to support students by increasing, increasing direct service staff to meet the intense needs of students post-pandemic. Why is our leadership recommending removing caring, trained adults from students' lives now? This is the opposite of centering the needs of students, which leadership states is their top priority. During the pandemic, the needs of my students and their families have been so much greater than any in my previous career. The trauma my students have and are currently dealing with is overwhelming. The first step to healing trauma is establishing a sense of safety, which we cannot do with our current staffing levels. The way to do this is to provide more trained, caring adults to serve students, not less. In a recent communication from PPS to families, the district tried to justify the cuts to direct service staff by citing enrollment declines. It is true, we are projected to have fewer students enrolled in our schools next year, but it is also true that we have plenty of funds to avoid any cuts to direct service staff. Our students, our children, need more support now than ever. And I ask you, what could be possibly more important than providing more caring, trained adults for them now? Last year, this board approved a budget framework that did not allow any one-time funds to be used for staff working directly with students. The tidal wave of needs came crashing through our doors this fall, and we are experiencing the aftermath now. We cannot make the same short-sighted mistake again. Our students deserve to be cared for, not abandoned. You have a great opportunity to make a real impact in the lives of children with budget surplus. You can reduce class sizes so students get more individualized attention. You can increase wages for staff, such as paraeducators and custodians, so we can hire, so we can hire ourselves out of critical staffing shortages. You can walk your equity talk by increasing the percentage set aside for the equity fund allotments. The number of schools qualifying for equity fund allotments has increased, meaning the need has increased, yet the resources not. The same eight percent of the total school staffing budget is set aside for equity allotments, yet as more schools qualify, the resources stretch thin. Increase the equiting funding with this surplus this year so that all schools qualifying for equity allotments are held harmless from staff cuts. You will likely hear from leadership tonight and through the budget process that you need to stay in your lane. I ask that you push back and show that you have the backs of our students. Anyone who has not spent at least one entire day working with students in the past year is out of touch with the crisis in our schools and are therefore not qualified to advise you on the wisdom of cutting direct service staff. Stand with students, reject the budget framework, reject cuts to school staffing during a surplus budget year. Thank you.
Tiffany Koyama Lane.
Hi. Thank you for your time, board members, superintendent. My name is Tiffany Koyama Lane. My pronouns are she/her. Do you want me to spell my last name?
Please.
K-O-Y-A-M-A, space, L-A-N-E. I teach third grade in PPS, and I'm also a parent of a kindergartner in the district. I'm here as someone who is deeply invested in PPS as a teacher, parent, and community member. And I want to be clear, I really love teaching. I've wanted to be a teacher since I was eight years old, and I was born to do this job. And also, at the same time, morale for teachers around the whole country is so low. Here in PPS, added to all the recent stress around COVID-19, trying to protect our classrooms, our communities, our families, we've gotten demeaning and accusatory emails from district staff. And these emails imply that we're taking advantage of a situation, that we don't care. And if you're not sure what I'm talking about, I'm happy to forward you those emails. Now, while pushing through these unprecedented times and working really harder than ever, we're being told that schools are getting classroom teachers cut from our buildings. Reshuffling, yanking, and cutting teachers injures a school's chance to be a great place for learning. It's short-sighted, and it doesn't add up. Is this cycle, is this a cycle that we've seen before, where we let all this talent go at this point in the school year, and then when we realize we need those teachers back in August, they've taken jobs in other districts? Decisions impacting our children are made by out-of-reach district leaders who we don't know and oftentimes come from faraway districts and leave for other faraway districts. And we need decisions to be made by people who show that they know our communities deeply and have spent years or even decades in PPS classrooms. To share a clear portrait, I've taught third-grade classes with 31 students, and I've also taught third-grade classes with 23 students, and it's just a completely different year when I have eight less students to support. I'm lucky that this year I have a smaller class size because a third of my students started third grade reading well below grade level, and I can actually do one-on-one conferencing and reading instruction twice a day. Cutting staffing for these students next year exponentially increases the likelihood that they're going to fall further behind academically. So I'm asking you to do what makes sense for children. Please listen to the educators who have been here for 20, 30, 35 years. Listen to experts. Please direct the district to improve class size and caseload ratios in all of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Swanson.
Hello, my name is Emily Swanson, S-W-A-N-S-O-N. I'm a parent of three PPS students, one in high school, one in middle school, and one in elementary school. I haven't heard anything yet from the high school and middle school, but our elementary community has learned that we are slated to lose two full-time teachers next year. And I know that many other schools have teachers on the chopping block as well. But I will speak about my daughter and her school, as that is what I know best. My daughter is eight years old. According to PPS projections, she will be in a class of 33 next year. And this is assuming that the school will lose students between now and next fall. Based on the current number of students in her grade, she will be in a class of 35. Thirty-five eight-year-olds with one teacher and no educational assistant. That is what the district is saying they will provide for my daughter's education. Does anyone here believe that this is an acceptable class size for eight-year-olds? Does anyone here think that our teachers can adequately serve the needs of 35 eight-year-olds at once? Does anyone think students can learn and do their best crammed into a room with 34 other students? Does anyone think having a class of 35 eight-year-olds allows for effective teaching and learning? This is an unacceptable class size and must be addressed by both the school board and the district administration. We all know that the aftereffects of over a year of virtual school will not be resolved by next fall. Students will still be struggling to catch up on their reading and math skills. Students will still be working on social, emotional skills they need to be successful in the classroom and in life. But even in normal times, we all know that 35 eight-year-olds in a classroom is not acceptable. PPS sends communications to its families that stress that lowering elementary class size is one of its priorities. If it is truly a priority, please act like it. Show us that smaller class sizes are a priority by retaining these teachers. At previous school board meetings, I have witnessed board members and district staff lamenting the drop in enrollment and wondering where the students have gone. I'm not sure I have the answer to that question, but I can assure you that if you desire to retain students, you will not achieve that through higher class sizes. By cutting staff now, you are creating a self-fulfilling prophecy. Teacher cuts lead to rising class sizes, which results in overworked teachers who seek jobs elsewhere and parents who choose options other than the public school system, which in turn leads to lower enrollment, requiring more teacher cuts. And the students who remain are the ones who suffer the most. If you want to build a high-quality public school system, you cannot begin by weakening the schools within it. You cannot do it by removing dedicated teachers from their classrooms or by increasing class sizes so that both teachers and students are overwhelmed and therefore less successful. And you cannot do it when parents choose to take their school, their children out of public school because you are not willing to fund enough teachers. Please, keep our teachers. Build the school system our children deserve. Thank you.
Jessica Foote. Jessica Foote.
Hello. My name is Jessica Foote. It's F-O-O-T-E. I'm on the PTA at Ricky Elementary School and a parent to three children there. Like many other parents here tonight, and teachers and students, Ricky's community was devastated to hear of our proposed staffing cuts, particularly to our art and PE program. These cuts are destabilizing to our teachers, our students, and undermine the confidence in our public school system that has continued to erode since the pandemic. I'd like to read a letter from Joe Garwin, a Ricky dad who couldn't be here tonight but wanted his words heard. Hello, PPS Board and Administration. I wish I could have been there this evening. I am writing this today as a plea for my second-grade daughter and her peers at Ricky Elementary. The last two years of COVID-19 took everything from our kids, and PPS's decision to further cut programming is a loss I'm unwilling to accept. We oppose these staff cuts. At Ricky, removing half of our art program and reducing PE when the district is already below minimum standards lacks the most basic vision of what our kids have gone through. Art is therapeutic and healing, and for some students, it can be the only outlet for what has been the most stressful period of their lives. This is coming from a stay-at-home dad who watched his wife go to work at a hospital through the days of early COVID, wondering if we would all survive at the end, only to have my own father pass from the disease just before vaccines became available. We said goodbye over FaceTime as he lay on a ventilator. My family has felt loss, and artwork has provided my daughter a concrete way to express her feelings and grief. I helped teach my daughter to read and write basic math through online school for a year and a half with an infant screaming in my arms, and this year alone, she has already had four different teachers. Ricky's art- So, we have several questions that we'd like to address to the board as well, and I feel like the previous speakers have covered many of our areas of concerns as well. But I would like to further understand the decision to cut these funds and how many other schools in PPS will only have a half-total teacher for any kind of arts programming. And I appreciate the difficult decisions you all have had to make over the past year and hope that you've made the right, will make the right decision going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have Noreen Smokey Smith and she's with us virtually.
Hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you say your first name and please spell your last name?
My name is Noreen, last name S-M-O-K-E-Y hyphen S-M-I-T-H. I'm an enrolled member of the Wausau tribe of Nevada in California and a retired Portland Public Schools Program Administrator. For the first half of my career, I served on the district's Indian Ed Parent Committee as a teacher representative. Then I administered the Indian Education Program the second half of my career. As an elder of the Portland Native Community, I'm here tonight to address an injustice to the Native students and parents of our district's Title VI Indian Education Program. Four weeks ago, Indian Ed staff were informed by Danny Ledesma that our Title VI program had been shifted from federally funded programs to RESJ. This announcement was shocking, not only to Indian staff but also to parents of our Title VI students because, to their knowledge, none had been consulted in advance. This unexpected move was a top-down administrative decision that blatantly disregarded Native Community consultation. Since its inception in the early '70s, Indian education has been under the purview of federally funded programs. Now, in the absence of a Title VI Director and Administrative Assistant, there has been a sudden, surprising shift. PPS district data confirm again this year that Native students involved in Indian education graduate at higher rates, 27% higher than Native students district-wide, 77% versus 50%. This is evidence that PPS Indian education under federal-funded programs works. Goal F of the RESJ Partnership Investment Strategy states, and I quote, "The district shall welcome and empower students and families, including underrepresented families of color, as essential partners in their students' education, school planning, and decision, district decision-making. Therefore, it is extremely disheartening that district administration is not engaging Title VI parents in any discussion prior to making pivotal decisions about our Indian Ed program. Frankly, it's a slap in the face. It sends a message that our Native voices don't matter and that the district knows what's best for our children, although Native students have the lowest achievement rates of any racial group in the district. We demand transparency and honest dialogue, and we demand the immediate return of Indian education to funded programs where we can maintain federal compliance and work collaboratively once again. And we emphatically do not support the demotion of the Title VI Director position to a supervisor as Ms. Ledesma has alluded. This position has been vacant for two months now and has yet to be advertised. We invite Superintendent Guerrero and school board members to meet with and listen to our Native elders and families, hear what appropriate support looks like to us, as we are the experts on our children." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, with your permission, I'd like to call the two names that we didn't get, just to make sure they didn't come in.
Please.
Do we have Dubai Doche? And then how about Tim Lee?
Okay, I think that concludes our public comment. Thank you for those who testified, particularly the students. Always great to hear from the students. Encourage other students that are not feeling brave enough to step up next time. So we're going to move now to the Student Representatives Report. Representative Weinberg.
Good evening, everyone. And yes, I'd like to reiterate the thanks to our young students who are stepping forward to speak. It is often very daunting, even as a senior sitting up here with everyone speaking, is sometimes anxious or makes me super nervous. So it's really encouraging to see young students stepping forward. It gives me hope for the future of student reps being, having a more solid voice on this board. So thank you. I want my report to focus on an update on what the District Student Council has been doing most recently. As you all know, part of our policy is a requirement to hold or host a student summit every year. We have started that process and are currently in the outreach phase, reaching out to affinity clubs, trying to brainstorm different topics we wish to discuss at the summit. Also, this year, led by the students on the District Student Council, we have more inter-district communication where we see students that represent their individual high schools communicating more with each other's high schools and also even visiting in-person other schools, learning about different class offerings, programs, clubs at schools around PPS to try to share the knowledge of what is working for our students. Also, an initiative or a project led by Byron E. McMahon is student town halls at every single high school by hopefully the time that District Student Council elections will happen, so we have more awareness around what the District Student Council is to the wider student body at high schools and also to foster more communication between administration and students. Lastly, my heart goes out to the people that lost family members, friends, community members at the shooting at Normandale Park this weekend. My heart specifically also goes out to the students who were present that evening and witnessed the violence rooted in white supremacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Weinberg. And thank you, by the way, just for the work you're doing on the, in your role, bringing students. I've noticed increased diversity of students that I'm hearing from, particularly just due to your outreach and other students that are in the room as well. So I just really want to appreciate you in the moment for diversifying the voices that we're hearing from and doing your work around that and just your excellent reporting and...
Yeah, I will say most of the work is coming from the District Student Council though, but thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Just giving my thanks to the District Student Council as led that work too.
Absolutely.
Like any great leader, he's distributing the credit.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to give your report tonight?
Good evening, Chair and Directors, and to those in attendance and watching from home. What I like about this monthly opportunity to report out the board and community is just to highlight our amazing students and staff. So I'll be brief this evening because I want to make sure and do that. And then I want to make sure we preserve topic as staff presents on the topic of interest here this evening. But let me start by recognizing our students who across the district continue to demonstrate academic success. Just a few examples, from Roseway Heights, students Winnie Fletcher, Javion Hudson, and Savannah Moore Jones. They're featured writers in this month's Black Student Magazine. Please go online, check it out. Three amazing students who contributed. Similarly, two students in Ms. Regi's eighth-grade class were recipients of national awards, a total of 20 actually, for their research, their writing, and their performances on the U.S. Revolutionary Era. And they've been invited to New York City to see Hamilton the play on an all-expenses-paid educational field trip. So congratulations to those students. Turning to athletics, as some of you know, this past weekend was PIL Championships. Cleveland Warriors, a dominant performance this weekend. The Warriors were led by Sean Lee, Logan Medford, Caleb Smeller, and Garrett Kapalunga, who all brought home championship gold after their victories in their respected weight classes and finals matches. So congratulations. Cleveland took the lead, first place, followed by Grant High School at second and McDaniel at third. Congrats to all our grapplers across the district. And I think last month, I mentioned to you that once again, we had Portland Public Schools in the We the People competing. And coming out on top, Grant High School's Constitution Team won Oregon's We the People competition here in Oregon. They're going to be moving on to the national competition. So good luck to our Grants High School Constitution Team. Like I said, we also have amazing staff, so I want to acknowledge a couple of recognitions and people. Marifer Sager, she leads our Language Access Team. We're delighted to learn that Education Week has selected to profile Marifer in the 2022 edition of Leaders to Learn From. This is an annual special report that spotlights innovative school district leaders nationwide. The profile highlights Marifer's outstanding contributions in providing language access for families, community educators here in the Portland Public Schools. Some of that work will appear, described in the report. You can read it, published in edweek.org and will be in the print edition as well. Marifer was selected by Education Week editors from among hundreds of nominations that were submitted by readers, staff reporters, educators, and experts in the K-12 field. As part of this recognition, Marifer has been invited to participate in a special Education Week Leadership Symposium this coming May to share practices, best practices, ideas, and innovations with fellow honorees and peers across the country, which will include a special ceremony for honorees. So we're always so proud of Marifer Sager's continued outstanding work. Congratulations. Felicidades, Marifer. Technology infrastructure, Chromebooks, hotspots, access points, digital learning platforms, and a pretty ambitious bond-funded list of projects. These are some of the things that I know keeps any large school district up, but in particular, PPS's own Chief Technology Officer worrying about these issues the past couple of years. So I'm really proud to share that this past week, just a few days ago in fact, the Council of Great City Schools, which as you know represents the 75 largest districts in America, named its annual Chief Information Officer/Chief Technology Officer of the Year. And that honor went to PPS's own Dawn Wolf. If you're here, where are you? Wave your hand. Somewhere in the back of the crowd, there he is. I want to wish a big congratulations to Dawn, our CTO, for this wonderful award and recognition, which speaks to his ongoing leadership at PPS. And I know Dawn's here because he's required to as a cabinet member. I don't know if Marifer was here this evening. I want to recognize her too. She's often watching. Felicidades again to you, Marifer. And lastly, I'll just say something briefly here because we're going to speak about this in just a few minutes later on in the agenda and we have a whole staff team prepared to do so. We know that there's a lot of questions about the emerging budget development, proposed budget, and development process that takes us through the spring into June. The first phase usually, just to make sure that our schools can begin to do some planning, was the staffing allocations that I know we're hearing about. You'll hear more about it tonight. Our budget development process, which includes a lot of direct services to our school communities, will continue to be vetted out and articulated in my own budget proposal to the staff in a couple of months. As you know, the board ultimately will consider that and lend its approval in June. So just to remind folks, this is a spring-long process. It's iterative, but we look forward to lending more context and more specifics later this evening by our district team. So I'll pause there because I know we're going to pick up this topic in just a little bit. So thank you. That concludes my report for this evening. Congrats to all our honorees tonight.
Thank you. And congratulations, felicidades, to Dawn Wolf and Marifer. I'm going to ask if any, for committee reports next, either to keep it brief or skip until our next meeting because we have a lot of content in this meeting. Does anybody have a burning committee report that can't wait? And if not, let's move forward.
I'd like to provide one later on in the meeting.
And you will provide one later on the meeting. Your, it's actually on the agenda.
We just have a lot of things in place. People who are on the committee.
Absolutely. So you're the only one that has one, burning that can't wait, but that's fine. It's on.
I'm not saying it's burning. I'm just saying.
It's on, you're on the agenda and so if that's okay for the policy.
That's fine. I'm just saying.
Exactly. Oops. Pardon me just a moment.
Can you clap for a little bit?
We can, we can, we seem to be doing a lot of clapping. Our next report is going to be on the projected staffing allocation.
That's why I want to give my report.
Okay. We're going to be, no, that's, that's okay. We're going to be giving a presentation. I'm not sure who's leading this conversation on the PPS staffing allocations.
Bit of intro. I'm hap-
Get up to the stage.
I'm happy to take the mic right back as senior staff makes its way to the front chair. As I just mentioned, it's that time in our annual school year when the early stages of our annual budget development cycle begins to be shared, especially with our school leaders as they anticipate school staffing needs and allocations required in order to continue providing core program requirements. Last week, we began communicating to building leaders and families news that since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, PPS has seen a significant decrease in student enrollment. As a result, we're projecting at least 3,400 fewer students this next school year. You've heard that before. That's about an 8% decline in total enrollment. Last year, we held staffing levels harmless at the school level in order to both promote stability and provide capacity on campuses, given the question of student mobility and an unknown number of students who may report back to school during a year spent largely online. Typically, preliminary staffing allocations are just the first step that school districts take in their overall budget development timeline. This phenomenon in PPS, I can assure you, is being repeated across all the metro districts. Tonight, we want to let you know about staffing measures will be taken in response to this decline and to mitigate for that in our efforts to ensure that we are fully staff for school year 22, 23, while making continued progress towards our pre-pandemic class-size goals and enhancement and continuity of expansion of direct services to students and accelerated learning supports to better ensure the success of our most underserved students. Staff is already hard at work vetting some high-leverage strategies aimed at meeting our outlined board goals. In the coming weeks, staff will continue to articulate this work, both action steps and implementation plans, and directors will learn about these more detailed plans. As is the case each year, as I just mentioned in the timeline, in April, I'll be sharing my proposed budget for the 22, 23 school year per our agreed-upon timeline. We understand there's a lot of questions on this topic, so tonight, we have some senior staff will be providing further context and an overview of the projected staffing allocations for 22, 23. This is the first of many in a long series of opportunities to understand and ask questions. But staff will be providing a high-level preview of some of the anticipated investments that we'll be proposing that leverage available state and federal monies to provide additional direct services to students and supports to schools. Our plan forward post-pandemic is to leverage all available revenue streams as well as one-time resources to continue to support and expand direct services, like instructional specialists, social workers, and counselors, as well as other new academic and behavioral supports for students, while being prudent with our ongoing general funds that prioritize sustainable investments in the long term so as not to create a fiscal cliff for the school system. Here to present and expand this evening are Dr. Renard Adams, our Chief of Research Assessment and Accountability, Alberto Delgado, our Chief Financial Officer, and Dr. Cheryl Proctor, our Deputy Superintendent of Instruction in School Communities, with a whole range of additional staff here also this evening. So I'll send it over to you all. Thank you, team.
Thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, board directors and student Representative Weinberg. Pleased to be back with you on this Tuesday night. If I could add the next slide, please.
You know, it may be worth noting that if people looked at this, at the presentation last week, it's a new presentation that's been uploaded in board books.
Thank you for that, Director Brum.
staff will be providing further context and an overview of the projected staffing allocations for 22, '23. This is the first of many in a long series of opportunities to understand and ask questions. But staff will be providing a high-level preview of some of the anticipated investments that we'll be proposing that leverage available state and federal monies to provide additional direct services to students and supports to schools. Our plan forward post-pandemic is to leverage all available revenue streams, as well as one-time resources, to continue to support and expand direct services, like instructional specialists, social workers, and counselors, as well as other new academic and behavioral supports for students, while being prudent with our ongoing general funds that prioritize sustainable investments in the long term so as not to create a fiscal cliff for the school system. Here to present and expand this evening are Dr. Renard Adams, our Chief of Research Assessment and Accountability, Alberto Delgado, our Chief Financial Officer, and Dr. Cheryl Proctor, our Deputy Superintendent of Instruction in School Communities, with a whole range of additional staff here also this evening. So I'll send it over to you all. Thank you, team.
Thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, Board Directors and Student Representative Weinberg. Pleased to be back with you on this Tuesday night. If I could add the next slide, please?
You know, it may be worth noting that if people looked at this, at the presentation last week, it's a new presentation that's been uploaded in board books. It's just substantially different.
Thank you for that, Director Brum, because it is an updated presentation. At our December Data Dive, Board Directors may recall that we first shared that we were projecting an enrollment decline for next school year. Now we are here to have a more detailed conversation into that enrollment decline and its implication on PPS. As has been shared and widely reported, PPS is projecting an 8% decrease in student enrollment for the 2022, 2023 school year, representing more than 3,400 students. This enrollment loss has a direct impact on resource allocations, which includes school Board members have seen this slide before, and here we have an update, or some updates, rather. When we last saw this slide in December, this slide of Oregon Public School Enrollment, we were able to share that across the state, student enrollment was down, over 21,000 students as compared to pre-pandemic levels. Now, with updated information for the 2021, 2022 school year, there are now closer to 30,000 fewer students enrolled across the state. The pandemic continues to have an impact on student enrollment, with fewer and fewer students enrolling year over year. PPS's enrollment trends are similar to what we have seen across the state and the country. This slide shows student enrollment over a number of years and numbers, as well as the percent change between the 2023 projection and 2020, and the 2023 projection compared to this year's enrollment. Since the beginning of the pandemic, our elementary enrollment has seen the greatest level of decline. In fact, and it is noted on the slide, there's been a 21% decline in K-5 enrollment. Now, I'd like to call your attention to the far-right column that notes our projected student enrollment changes from this year to next year's projection. Here you will note a 14% decline in elementary enrollment, a 3% decline in K-8 enrollment, an 11% decline in middle school enrollment in grades six through eight, with high schools remaining relatively flat. It is important to note that PPS has been staffing schools at pre-pandemic levels despite this enrollment decline.
Dr. Adams, just a really quick question. The K through eight, so those are just K through eight schools?
Yes, yes, sir.
You've got K through eight. And I'm just curious, and how many of those programs do we have district-wide? I've forgotten now.
I don't have that number, but I can get it for you.
It's just, it's an interesting distinction that only 3% there, even though you've got 14 and 11% in K through eight.
And then overall, it comes to eight, through the weighted averages.
Okay. Thank you.
While there is no single reason for our enrollment decline, some factors include declining births, school reconfigurations, enrollment patterns, and choices that families have made regarding their children during the pandemic. The image here shows actual PPS enrollment over time compared to two different enrollment projections. Actual enrollment is shown in green. You can see that beginning in 2020, we experienced a pandemic-driven enrollment decline. Our 2020 projection for school year 2020, 2021 had an optimistic return of students. This is shown in blue. As you all are aware, that level of student return to PPS did not happen. Instead, we see the actual enrollment in green continue to decrease. For school year 2021, school year 20 slash 21, staff allocations were not reduced based on this enrollment decrease. Ignoring enrollment losses in that year to lessen impacts on staffing in grades K through eight was an almost $4 million investment. This year, we worked with the Population Resource Center at Portland State University. They help us with our enrollment projections every year, and we work with them to revise our projection for next school year to account for students not returning to PPS and an ongoing decline in enrollment, which was already predicted to happen prior to the pandemic. This revised projection is shown in orange. The result of this revised projection would be an FTE adjustment this coming school year as we essentially are adjusting for the last two school years of student enrollment declines. An obvious question might be, well, Dr. Adams, how can you be confident about the enrollment projections, given the volatility of COVID-19? Well, we now have two years of enrollment decline to help project next year's enrollment. We didn't have that in October of 2020, as we start a new trend. And additionally, prior to the pandemic, PPS was already projected to lose student enrollment over time. The pandemic simply accelerated the enrollment decline. What's more, we know that new births are declining in Multnomah County, and that our kindergarten capture rate, which is the number of students we enroll five years later after they're born, is significantly lower than the birth rate and is also declining, which is why we see such a stark student enrollment decline at the elementary grades than we see at other As has been mentioned before, student enrollment determines revenue, which determines resources that we can allocate to schools. With an overall 8% student enrollment decline for next school year, after staffing at pre-pandemic levels for the last two years, we're anticipating a staffing adjustment of just 4% after a series of strategic investments, which Dr. Proctor will describe during tonight's presentation. As of today, we expect a staffing adjustment of just under 140 positions, which is a staffing adjustment of 4% compared to our student enrollment projected decline of next year of 8%. It's important to note that as educational leaders, we agree with the broader community that schools have never been funded at the level that we truly need. We're appreciative of the additional investments and as stewards of public funds, have the responsibility to provide supports to students, especially for students of color, equitably, while working to provide those supports within our financial means. It is also important to note that during the first year of the pandemic, the state held schools harmless to reductions even as enrollment declined. And then this year, we, as a school district, use one-time dollars to hold schools harmless even as enrollment continued to decline. Again, this was nearly a $4 million investment. And for the next year, we're going to continue to use one-time dollars to soften the impact on schools as we adjust staffing to more closely align with student enrollment moving forward. And now with that, our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Delgado, will provide an overview of school funding.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Adams. So to add a little bit more context, we're going to go to the next slide, and there's a lot of information on this slide. But it's relevant to the conversation we're having regarding how we've kept allocating staffing to pre-pandemic levels. And between 2019, 2020, '21, 2021, 2022, we invested dollars that were on track with what we see as our ADMW. So enrollment fuels our funding. This is one of the fuels our revenue. And a critical component to that is then the needs and weights that are associated with the student population, which creates the ADMW. And so when we see where we were in 2021 compared to 21, '22, our enrollment produces our weighted ADMW, which is a second row. And that second row on that table, you'll notice 57, 825, 55, 935, 53, 817, 53, 563. And so those numbers represent our ADMW, which is our student population. Then the enrollment numbers used for state revenue, right, we're talking about revenue, are for 2021 was 57, 825, for 55, 93, excuse me, for 21, '22 was 55, 935. And so now we're forecasting for next year for that to be approximately 53,817. The distinction here is that if you notice in 2021, there's a gap between 55, 935 and 57, 825. So the revenue being used is more than the enrollment number. So it creates space there to allow for additional funding to support for some of the additional investments. And as you move forward to what we're projecting next year, that gap is pretty much closed. So when we think about our ADMW versus what we can use, our extended ADMW, there isn't much gap there. So when we think about our general fund, and we'll talk a little bit more about the general fund in a second, those are now like our limited resources that we use for our day-to-day operations. So that is one of the key elements that's happening as we're thinking, as we're working towards our proposed budget, as we're working towards our adopted budget for next year, is finding the balance between the fiscal cliff, one-time funds, with the reality that we see in front of us. And, and so with that context in mind, right, just kind of taking a step back, when we think about all the different funds that make our budget. And, and so almost half of our budget is our bond dollars, right? We're very thankful to our community for supporting our bond projects, inclusive of the funding that goes to paying back the bonds. We're then left with essentially the other side of that pie chart. We have the blue section, we have the red section. The red section is our special revenue dollars. So when we think about SIA, our title grants, there's a variety of additional funding sources that are in that bucket, but most of them have restrictions. They're for specific uses, targeted investments. And so it's really a complement to that blue slice, the general fund, that it goes to talk about our day-to-day operations. And if we double-click on that blue slice and essentially open up our general fund, we then see that we have a variety of different funding sources that, the funding streams that support what the general fund is. So we think about enrollment, ADMW, our general fund, and then the balance with, of what are, the balance between the property taxes, the balance between our state school funding and how that plays out impacts our general fund. So the bottom line is, when we think about the general fund, it's primarily made up of money from the, from state for operations based on student enrollment. So I want to then now go a little lower level, talk about like, how does this play out at a school site? And, and so, oh, well, this is, sorry, got ahead of myself. So thinking about how do the operations, like, when we start thinking about our expenses in the general fund, how are general dollars being distributed? And so about 84% of our funds go towards people. These dollars are what's used in our general fund to support positions, whether it's teachers, bus drivers, parent educators, custodians. And so as I was stating earlier, the other funding sources outside of the general fund, such as tied on SIA, enhance and provide additional supports for the general fund. And in the following slide, we see that as an example here, it's a K-5 Title I TSI school with about 268 students, equates to about 26.5 staff. And when we look at the breakdown of that school budget, we see approximately 2.9 million is in personnel. So just common trend across the board, and it doesn't matter where, the vast investment is in people. And that also plays out at the school site. And if you then take that blue portion and then start expanding into it to see how is then the school site staff funded, we see that about 82% is funded by the general fund. So now, how is then the general fund enhanced to support it? So then you have about SIA, you have title dollars, a variety of other funding sources that help support the funding that is supporting, or you have a variety of other funding sources that's supporting the general fund. And this is one example. We have, I pulled this out from our budget book in volume two that gives, provides examples and provides this additional information. So that, you kind of see the through line of how enrollment impacts ADMW, which impacts the general fund, which is a unique funding source. But then there are these other funding sources to help enhance the general fund. And when we, was there a question?
Yes, I have a question, just about the local option. It's one slide back. It has the local option at like 13% of the budget, and I thought the local option was 100, what we told the community, is $100 million and about 900 teachers. And I'm just curious, if it's only 13%, that seems, that wouldn't be 100 million.
It's, it's about, this is based on the general fund, so we're looking at about $770 million. And so the local option levy does support about 900 teachers.
And that's impacted by enrollment?
Correct. That's essentially like the funding source, I heard, the voice in the sky.
It's me. I just did the math on my calculator, and 100 million is 13% of 770.
So then that's 900 teachers, but it's not any revenue sources impacted by enrollment?
Correct. Yeah, that's a good clarify.
Thank you for the math, Director Lowery.
Voice in the sky. Thank you.
I've got my laptop on, and I can hit my calculator really fast up here.
And so when we start projecting out, what are we working with right now? We see that when we look at where we are this current year, '21, '22, our beginning fund balance is about $88 million. So we wrapped up our audit back in December, numbers came back, our fund balance grew by about $34 million. When we start looking at where we were based on our, this year's ADMW, projected state revenue is about $677 million, and you just kind of see how this plays out. Going through central budget savings, we've identified about $9 million this year, and also about forecasting to identify another $7 million for next year. And when we look through this current year, our ending fund balance at 87.7 million. And then when we start thinking about and forecasting for next year, we see what our projected state revenue looks like, what our expenditures look like, and then our ending fund balance of about $55.7 million. So, and our goal based on our board policy is to maintain about 10%, or not about, to maintain 10% of our, our fund balance is 10% of our annual revenues. And we kind of put this in mind and then start looking at, how does this start playing out?
Actually, can I just, can I just clarify on that last slide? I'm sorry, another voice from?
Yes. This one I see here.
I want to, I want to make sure, if we could just go back, that we don't lose that point. What we're talking about, I know that we don't have the superintendent's proposed budget yet, is potentially using $32 million of our reserves and dropping that from 13% down to 8% in order to preserve staffing positions, teaching levels, et cetera. I just, I don't, I don't want to miss that.
That's correct, Director.
Okay, thank you.
But in violation of board policy.
To drop below 10%. That's right.
So this is, you know, an initial concept. It's for illustrative purposes, but the point being, we have to make some trade-off decisions. I mean, he put it nicely, but I asked all of my chiefs to identify cost efficiencies to come up with additional savings to try to soften, you know, an on- or off-ramp here. So you're right, the 8% doesn't represent the 10% that the board would like to see. That would, that would require identifying further cost savings in other areas.
And I'm mostly highlighting this because I think often we, you know, and I know even last year, when we were talking about this and put more money in the reserves, one of the questions is, why? Why are you doing that? And I actually think this is a really good example of, you know, having a little bit more allows us to soften some of these, you know, impacts moving forward. So, okay.
And the voice in the sky, I would just like to remind everyone that some of this came from when I was on CBRC, that we really could see after 2008, the way that that sudden cuts really impacted PPS and caused a lot of harm in our buildings. And so to have that percentage, at least 10% that we can use when there are exceptional years like this one, to try to soften the blow was the intention behind the creation of that, encouraging the board to create that policy.
And so as we plan and think about softening the blow and thinking about what that scaled down for that fiscal cliff looks like, the, the gold, I was stuck on gold or yellow, but the yellow line across, that's our board reserve policy. You see, the gray line is our fund balance, and then you have the bar charts, right? You have blue, which is our revenue. You then have orange, which are expenses. And this is just general fund, so we're just talking about the general fund right now. And as we look at where we are in 2022 and look towards 2023, that's using the fund balance, kind of like just a scenario right now, without taking any action, we go through our fund balance in 2024. And so when we start thinking about our resources, how do we start working towards finding that how do we start working towards finding that balance in easing the fiscal cliff and trying to mitigate a ten-thousand-foot cliff versus the step-down approach? And so as, as we consider the information we have in front of us, it's the conversations we're having in supporting whole, keeping allocation steady this year. Next year, eight percent decline in enrollment, but it's not a direct, as Dr. Adams shared, it's not eight percent reduction in staff. It's, uh, four percent. So i- i- and it, and includes additional investments, but also being mindful of targeted opportunities that Dr. Proctor will share some more insight over the next few slides. And so I will turn this over.
Alberto, this is again, the voice in the sky, Director Lowery. I didn't understand that chart at all. Could you explain it again?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, it's really, it's hard to see for me.
Yeah, no, and, and you know, I, I'm gonna, uh, Dr. Adams called it, so, yeah. So it's just full transparency. Uh, so the, uh, the blue bars represent, uh, revenue. And then the orange bars represent our expenses. So the trend that we see here is that the blue, uh, bars are not keeping up with the orange bars at the rate we're going. So that's one thing that's happening here, and that's overlaid with respect to our fund balance. So the gray line is our fund balance and subsequent fund balance projection. So in twenty-twenty-two, we see a fund balance of about eighty-five million dollars. And in twenty-twenty-three, a forecast, a projected fund balance of fifty-five million dollars. And then the yellow line is our, where we would need to be in order to, uh, meet our, our board policy, uh, goal of ten percent. So you'll see there is this point between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, we're, we're meeting, we're exceeding our board reserve policy. But then subsequently, we go, our, our gray line, which is our fund balance, goes below our yellow line because of the revenue and expenditure bars based on those trends.
So is that two-hundred-and-eleven million that's at the bottom of the cliff in twenty-twenty-seven? Is that the difference between the blue line and the orange line, basically?
I, i- it's an accumulating effect across the board, which?
Oh, that's, okay, that makes sense, because one-thirty-three plus then?
Right. Which would be completely illegal, just, we, we're not the federal government. We can't print money, we need to submit a, a balanced budget. So it's, it's right, just there as, uh, as, 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 as we think about how to not go below zero.
And does that, that chart assumes the thirty-two-hundred, uh, enrollment drop just?
Correct.
In perpetuity, like, we don't anticipate that changing at all?
Correct. It, 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 it keeps our ADMW declining, but then in around twenty-twenty-five, it, we, just for projection purposes, we have more work to do, it keeps it steady. But that goes back to, uh, reviewing our, uh, information from the, um, people research, from Portland State University, the Population Research Center.
Yeah, I mean, just, and I know that's, this, this is more to be, make a dramatic point. Um, but when I was on the board in two thousand and two and we had a, the very deep recession and we lost, it's striking, I just saw a news article the other day, we lost thirty-two-hundred, uh, students, um, that then came back. And so I, I guess since we don't know what the, um, what the reasons, if we're saying we don't know what the reasons are why students have left, um, that I guess I'm, I'm more optimistic that, um, we're gonna see a return. I mean, I'm hopeful, because that's, that's a lot of families to lose and if, if they're not just going to other, um, schools. So I guess I see some dynamic, there's a dynamic nature to that. Um, and in two thousand and two, we did get back our, our students. And, um, I think Superintendent Guerrero's first year here was sort of the, the high point of the, the enrollment basis, so. And again, not to dismiss this, I just want to note that it's more dynamic.
And it's finding that balance between the, the step-down versus holding your breath for that giant fiscal cliff.
And, and every year, this is revisited as we redo our enrollment projections when we have the most current year's information in the model. And that then impacts Norberto's model in terms of funding and revenue and expenditures.
So as a?
I think that was worth spending time on that slide because that was the rationale for the hold harmless for two years, because no one could predict and the assumption was that these students will come back. But they haven't.
Right, we now have two years of data that says that the students are not coming back, except at the high school level where we see a small uptake.
Right, thanks.
I will turn this over to Dr. Proctor.
Thank you. And, you know, as we've gone through and reviewed, uh, general fund and how it works and have, you know, concluded that conversation with the understanding that we budget based on trends, um, not by a, a forecast, I want to now turn the conversation to some of our special allocations. Um, our special allocations, it's important to note again, is separate from our general fund. Our general fund is what we use to, um, operate our district, pay for salaries, et cetera. But with our special allocations, there are some special things that we can do to achieve our goals. So since two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, PPS has received targeted state dollars and one-time federal dollars for direct student purposes. These funds have, um, limited guidelines on how we can utilize said, said funds. These direct, um, student supports are designed to offset the disparaging, disparaging impact of pandemic learning on our underserved student populations, demonstrating the most unfinished learning. We're glad to bring equity to the spaces with the most inequitable effects on student performance and outcomes as noted by our district MAP data. Though these funds, through these funds, excuse me, uh, PPS aims to align actions to the strategic plan, focus our efforts on high-quality curriculum, instruction and academic programming, and ensure each and every student can realize the graduate portrait. At the same time, we aim to take on the very important work of building teacher capacity through the educator essentials with the aim of guaranteeing every student has a high, highly effective educator standing before them each day. To achieve the desired outcomes for the SIA and SIR investments, it is necessary to assess the needs of students and teachers after the COVID pen, uh, nineteen pandemic because it has exacerbated, uh, pre-existing gaps in the learning experiences and instructional practices. We will accelerate student learning by preparing educators to connect academic and non-academic data to target interventions for students in order to effectively, um, support students' needs. For this reason, it is important to unpack the student experience in the classroom, identify the level of rigorous, standards-aligned, personalized instruction students may or may not be experiencing each and every day. So we are, um, as noted, since twenty?
I think our presenter's having a really hard time presenting with the chatter. If you don't mind giving her the respect, please, um, to finish her presentation.
Thank you, cheer to pass. Since two thousand and nineteen, as stated before, in two thousand and twenty, PPS has received targeted dollars and we are delivering, right? Um, PPS is investing over thirty-six million in direct student academic learning and supports. The SIA is part of a grant called SSA, which is Student Success Act, and is a biennial fund from the state corporate excise tax. The total SIA allocation for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year totaled over thirty-six million. The categories for which we are spending include increased academic supports and targeted interventions for our most vulnerable and historically underserved students, increased social, emotional, mental, and behavioral health supports across the district, more optimal student-teacher ratios and class size across many grade levels, expansion of elective courses at comprehensive middle schools and K-eights, more equitable access to arts education, especially in historically underserved school communities, culturally-specific student and family supports, and expanded community partnerships, including, in addition to curriculum, uh, materials and, uh, professional learning. For specific examples of how this fund is used, for example, we allocated, um, social workers, including social workers for our middle schools, our K-eight, Title I, and TSI schools. Additionally, every middle school in the proposed, uh, budget for twenty-two, twenty-three is proposed to be staffed for the seventh-period day, which in of itself reduces class size. The district's school funding cycle will conclude in April, as was described, when Superintendent Guerrero will bring, um, a proposed budget for the board to consider in April twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two and for a board vote in June of twenty-twenty-two. The PPS budget, uh, finance team is working closely with district leaders to identify the best spending to respond to the learning needs of all students, including our most underserved and vulnerable student populations. Um, with an overview of the PPS revenue and general fund, uh, let's look again at the special allocations received from both, uh, state and federal funds. Uh, let's start with SIR. This slide speaks specifically, uh, to SIR funds. So as you would see here, that, um, you know, with some of the funding for, um, the year, during the global pandemic, uh, PPS utilized one-time federal, federal follow, federal dollars to address health and safety, um, student learning needs, social, emotional, and mental health services, technology and online learning, allocation, um, again, to our alternative schools and our community-based organizations or partners, in addition to our charter schools. As far as our draft, uh, for what we are looking at proposing for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the use of SIR, we are looking at spending about thirty-two, uh, about thirty-two-point-seven million, um, of what was the sixty-nine-point-six million, uh, to continue with some of our efforts with professional learning, learning acceleration, student learning supports, class size reduction, online learning academies, uh, student internet and hotspots, and many more services that we will provide, uh, for our students. And as we continue through, so what you see in the table is a continuation of the spending for those SIR dol- dollars. Uh, at the top, the available funds, uh, to the left, in twenty-twenty, twenty-one, uh, we, uh, started off with one-hundred-and-fifteen million. And as we spend year over year, we do have a limited, uh, timeframe to spend and utilize these funds, a, a total of three years. And our plan is to project out and spend these funds , uh, through the conclusion of the twenty-two, uh, uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And that's a typo on this slide.
So just to be clear, there are no new SIR front funds or no projected new sources of federal pandemic relief funds? This is just the spend down from the original allocation, which needs to be exhausted by the end of twenty-four, correct?
Correct, September twenty-four. And there are no, uh, new dollars that's coming. All right, so?
I'm sorry, I was just curious, is it twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four projected?
Yes, that's a typo on this slide.
Okay.
So I had just a question too, um, just looking at the, you know, thinking about those dollars, um, I'm wondering what the division is between things that were spent very specifically on health and safety related to COVID, you know, reopening the buildings and maintaining a healthy and safe environment? And then the funds, um, that were more focused on helping support students just with the sort of wide, um, range of, um, learning that happened during the pandemic? And so I'm just curious about, like, are we spending a small amount now at this point in time on the health and safety because our buildings are open, their protocol's in place? Or is it like fifty-fifty? I'm just trying to get a sort of ballpark on the split between the strategies of supporting our students?
Yeah, so with that, with, with the onset of, uh, COVID and the pandemic, as you can understand, us being thrusted in a new scenario that no district had ever faced before, we had to, uh, put forth more dollars, um, in those efforts to make our schools ready, to invest in, uh, clear screens, to mask and provide, um, you know, all of the resources necessary that was required in the time. As we continue to, uh, to, uh, build our budget and how we will continue to use these funds according to the guidelines set forth, yes, you're right, there will be, you know, some, um, adjustments within how, uh, those dollars are spent.
But like, for example, for twenty-two, twenty-three, is it like ten percent on health and safety? Or is it like half or what?
I don't have that information right now.
I think that's a good question. I think as directors bring this up, we want to see that sort of trend over time because you're right, the first year or two, we spent millions on HEPA filters with MERV thirteen. Now we're only buying replacement filters. So that costs, the health and safety costs might go down. That frees up the other dollars for, for the other direct services.
Hey, everybody? I want to hear, I want to hear from you, but I, I also want to hear from the presenters. I'm trying to make sense of this as well. But how, I just want to ask you how effective it is. It's not very effective to interrupt the meeting. I, I want to move on. Thank, thank you for making a showing and I'd really like to get on with the meeting if you don't mind. I, I would, I would really appreciate, I would really appreciate, it's really tough up, being up here as a black woman and having my leadership usurped. I understand that, I'm just, I'm, I'm up here though. I'm up here.
Okay, okay, oh, okay.
Listen.
Can we, can, we gotta, we gotta be respectful.
I don't want to argue back.
Okay, we gotta, yeah, we gotta be respectful. So you have to be respectful in order for this to continue to go. You can keep going back and forth all day long, that's not going to get anything solved, that's not going to get any of your information out there. So let's, let's just, just be respectful and listen, let's just listen. And, and because there, there are ample opportunities for people to be engaged. There's budget, there's budget committees, there's all kind, hold on, hold on, hold on, please. All, all we're asking for is some respect so we can, so we can, so you can hear what they have to say, at the very least, and then we can, we can continue this dialogue later, but this is not the time and place right now.
This is going nowhere.
I'm gonna ask that we recess for just a few minutes and I would hope that you give your PAT president, um, some respect. I, I just hope that she's able to present, um, respectfully, just like I would if you were presenting, if you were talking, just as anybody here. I don't want to be up here and argue with you, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Everybody's attention back, please. Has everybody taken a chance to take a deep breath in and a deep breath out before we get started? Because I know I did and it's helpful. Um, I, I appreciate everybody's engagement and? I, I, I do, I appreciate everybody's, um, engagement, however you show up. And, uh, do appreciate your time and attention, we've got four more slides. Um, we, we will have a, we will have a work session scheduled in the next couple of weeks, probably no later than three weeks, for board questions. But for now, we're gonna move through the, the last four slides. We're gonna, um, hopefully give, um, Dr. Proctor and Dr. Adams and Chief Delgado, Delgado? Norberto, um, the respect they deserve to finish the last four slides. We're then gonna hear from the PAT president and the PFS, SP president. So, um, just bear with us, please, okay? Can you please go ahead?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, as we were talking about, uh, special revenue, uh, what we? So, as we were talking about special revenue, what we propose is that we'll continue to work with our budget, our budget, in our budget process, in preparation for presenting a full comprehensive budget proposal for you by April. And given that, with some of these enrollment declines, we will invest those one-time dollars to limit the impact of schools and advance key staffing priorities, despite those reductions that we discussed earlier. So some of how we hope to do that, by the time we bring this to you in April, and some of what we've already started to do, will be the limited, using the targeted state and one-time federal investments to strategically maintain more than forty student-facing positions. So with that, you know, it's important for us to continue this work, to, to make progress towards our class-size goals, to bolster our behavior, behavioral and mental health support and advance, and enhance, excuse me, access to the arts, in addition to mitigating some of those enrollment declines. And in these slides, you'll see some very specifics on how we propose to do that, when it comes to limiting, limiting the impact of the enrollment. Again, we've already looked at and adjusted our class size, which represented a reduction of the number of students in classrooms, in addition to ensuring that we see no more than fifteen percent year-to-year change in K-five homerooms, regardless of the enrollment change. You know, to make incremental progress towards that class size, again, you know, we shared information about how we were doing that, and we will maintain additional teachers as a result of shifting that, especially for our Title I schools, our CSI schools, and for some of our grades represented in all, all schools across the district.
If I could chime in here, Dr. Proctor?
Yes, go ahead.
While we mentioned an eight percent student enrollment decline, it's important for everyone to understand that not each school is experiencing an eight percent enrollment decline. Some schools are experiencing a decline much lower than that, some schools are experiencing a twenty-five or twenty-six percent student enrollment decline, and so the cap at fifteen percent was really our effort to make sure that the staffing impact wasn't as large as it otherwise could have been.
Correct. So we've already started planning forward with these specialized allocations to mitigate some of the enrollment issues. So with that, two other ways that we're looking at it, as, as shared before, is prioritizing our behavioral and mental health supports, we'll maintain a total number of the current counselors. So where there was, we initially looked at the possibility of reducing school counselors, we were able to then mitigate that by using some of these one-time state, federal funds and some of our state allocations. We maintain thirty-two FTE social workers to focus on increasing the accessibility of social emotion, stu, social, social, emotional student supports. Finally, another area is maintaining and enhancing access to arts education. We really looked at how it is that we could improve that. So we use some general fund dollars to maintain the four-point-five FTE art positions across nine schools for next year, where they otherwise would have been lost. And we're also looking at expanding on our master arts plan by, for seventy-five percent of all PPS students, to attend a school with both performing and visual arts. This is the area where there were some inequitable practices that we are mitigating as well, using these specialized dollars. And I'll turn it back over at this time to Delberto to close us out with our final slide.
Thank you, Dr. Proctor. So, this evening, we provided a preview of our plan. We're going to come back, we're going to have a work session, we're going to subsequently come back and, and put together a proposed budget, a balanced budget proposal in April. And, and so, this preview of our plan is, is, is essentially a step down, a slow step down, creating that off-ramp, if you may, from staffing at pre-pandemic levels, planning for the subsequent fiscal cliff, that is ESER, one-time funds, and, and most importantly, continuing our commitment to targeted investments. And it's, it's working through those various variables that we're contending with to put together our plan. And so, with that, we conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. As we get through this, again, we're going to be scheduling a work session in the next several weeks for, to provide opportunities for the board and, and staff to have question and answers, and we know that this isn't the first budget conversation, that we're going to have continuing conversations through June. So, thank you very much, and thank you to the audience for taking a deep breath with me and, and bearing, bearing with us.
Thank you.
We're now going to hear from Elizabeth Teal.
Well, that was a very warm welcome for my first time getting to appear before the board in person during my two years as PAT president, so, thank you.
Welcome. This is your first time in person?
Being, appearing before you, it is, yeah, I've spoken only virtually to you. The last meeting we had in person-
Was that in twenty nineteen?
No, the last one that, 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 when I presented to you was, was interrupted, but, and so it's nice to be here.
Thank you.
Good to see you all in person, yes. So, hello, Chair de Pass, Superintendent Guerrero, Student Representative Weinberg, and members of the board, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. The last two school years have been incredibly difficult for our students, school communities, and staff. Looking to next year, we have an incredible opportunity to make things better. But the staffing cuts that PPS rolled out last week, around a hundred and twenty teaching positions is what I thought I knew, but I heard a hundred and forty today, do the opposite. I want to talk to you tonight about how we can correct course to prioritize our students and stabilize our schools. We've heard a lot about the decline in enrollment over the last two years, and this has been cited as the rationale for cutting teacher positions. And typically, we assume that school funding is tied to enrollment numbers, so fewer students means less funding. But that's not exactly how school funding works in Oregon. The legislature sets an overall K-12 budget, and then divides it amongst districts based on the proportion of students they enroll. This year, enrollment is down across the state, as Dr. Adams presented, by about thirty thousand students. That broadly matches the decline we've seen here in PPS. But the total amount of funding from the state, about nine-point-three billion in this biennium, has not gone down. If anything, we are likely to see an increase in state support next year, given the eight-hundred-million-dollar increase in projected revenue, which is what the news was saying just on my way over here tonight, which was announced two weeks ago and being discussed right now. So with stable school funding divided amongst fewer students across Oregon, the state is actually projecting more funding per student for PPS and other districts. This means we have the opportunity and the responsibility to give each student more next In PPS, we also have several other significant sources of funding, as you saw presented, and these sources are also stable despite the drop in enrollment. We have stable funding from the Student Success Act, which was passed in twenty-nineteen specifically to lower class sizes and provide more social, emotional support to students. We have stable funding from the Teacher Levy, thank you for noting that, which voters renewed in order to support smaller class sizes. And we have continued funding through the Arts Tax. Again, these sources are providing stable funding despite the decrease in enrollment, they did not go down because we have fewer students, so it's more per student. There is no funding shortage that requires PPS to cut teachers and raise class sizes. And in addition to all these ongoing fun, sources of funding, we have a windfall of federal support totaling a hundred and twenty million dollars over the, the life of those funds, and they must be spent the next two years. This money is specifically meant to protect students and school districts from cuts and disruptions like the ones that we've begun rolling out. And I want to let you know, when I've talked to our state legislators about the, the cuts that have been begun to be rolled out, they were shocked to hear that with all of this funding, that our school district is proposing cuts. So, all this means is that next year, we have an opportunity to make a better year. We finally have the funding in the classroom space to lower class sizes, which is exactly what our students and educators need. But as you know, this is currently not the course we're on. So last week, PPS announced reductions of over a hundred and twenty teacher positions in elementary and middle schools across the district, negatively impacting almost all of our schools. The rationale to do so is to increase class sizes to match the district's pre-pandemic staffing ratios. These class sizes were too high then, and they are much too high now. PPS's staffing ratios call for kindergartens up to twenty-nine students, second grades up to thirty-two students, and in our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes, classrooms, up to thirty-five students in a class. We fully support the district's efforts to provide better class sizes in our CSI and Title I schools, including capping CSI kindergartens at twenty-four, thank you, that is an important first step, but we need to do much more. Even in our CSI schools, which serve our students with the greatest needs, we will have class sizes of thirty-four for fourth and fifth graders and in middle schools, according to the district's plan. We can do much, much better, and our students need us to do much better. A week ago, building principals shared staffing allocations with school faculty. After a year defined by persistent staffing shortages and increased student needs, news of these cuts was an additional and unexpected blow to morale amongst educators and other school staff. Here are some examples of how these one-hundred-and-twenty cut positions will be impacting students in schools. At Peninsula Elementary, a Title I school, next year, two second grade, or, next year's second grade will have thirty students per classroom. Remember, next year's second, second graders are this year's first graders and last year's kindergarteners, they have their kindergarten online. This year in first grade, they're learning not only the regular first-grade skills, but they're also catching up on the things that are typically such a huge part of kindergarten, like how to sit at a desk and how to hold scissors. Those same students will be in a single-strand second-grade class of thirty. At the same school, two sections of fifth grade are being collapsed into one section of thirty-two eleven-year-olds. At Scott Elementary, a CSI school, they'll be combining fourth and fifth grades to avoid having class sizes in the mid-thirties. This means teachers will be forced to split their time planning and teaching the curriculum for two different grades. Beach Elementary has to choose between having a full-time secretary or a full-time librarian, and whether to cut their instructional specialist or blend grade levels to avoid class sizes in the mid-thirties. These are not fair choices. Elementary schools across the district will have class sizes in the thirties, including at Grouse, Markham, Richmond, Glenco, Atkinson, Alameda, Lowellhurst, Sunnyside, and many others, those are just the ones that reported them to me, I haven't gotten this data from the district, although it's been requested for ten days. School communities will be losing beloved educators who want to stay with their students and colleagues, including at Sitten, Rigler, Buckman, Abernathy, Lewis, Beverly Cleary, Harrison Park, and Vernon. Middle schools, which have struggled this year to maintain safe and supportive learning environments, given the increased level of student need, are collectively losing forty-four teachers. All our middle schools are staffed to have class sizes of thirty-four or thirty-five, CSI and Title I schools included. We talk about the importance of relationships and stability for our middle school students, yet Oakley Green is losing three and a half teaching positions, Kellogg is losing six, and Mount Taber's losing five. Our high schools are not losing staff overall, because they are understaffed this year, and will continue to be understaffed next year. Our high school students are frequently in classes over thirty, and many educators have over a hundred and eighty students to build relationships with. This is not what our students need after two years of disruption and instability. So we want to come back to that opportunity to make next year better. The combination of lower enrollment, stable school funding from local and state sources, and a hundred and twenty million dollars in federal relief funding means that we have the resources necessary to give our students what they need: more individual attention from their teachers, calm and safe classrooms, and more opportunities for personal connections, engagement, and support. As, as a board, you always aim to be student-centered in your decision-making. When we talk about the budget and staffing, that means prioritizing direct supports for students. Cutting teachers should be the last resort, not the first step before a budget has even And I want to acknowledge that this feels a little out of order. As a board, you have not been asked to approve the PPS budget yet, that doesn't happen until April, but these staffing cuts are happening now. Principals have already presented these cuts to staff, and in the next week, will begin formally on assigning teachers. And after being unassigned from their schools, many teachers are likely to look for jobs in other districts or other fields, which will only make our staffing shortage worse. If we stay on this path, we are choosing to implement pre-pandemic staffing levels and class sizes, which already fell far short of our students' needs. But there is another path, and we are asking you to take it. Every parent and educator knows that students thrive when they have the support and attention they need and deserve. Instead of cutting teachers, please direct the district to cut class sizes. The resources are available, and the need now is undeniable. I'm here tonight because it's not too late to fix this if the board takes action now. You can direct the district to pause on, on assigning educators, and instead, improve the staffing ratios and put those a hundred and twenty teachers back into classrooms where students need them. Thank you. I'd like to next welcome Michelle Batten, I hope I've pronounced that correctly. Batten?
Yes.
The president of the Portland Federation of School Professionals to provide her comments. Thank you.
Good evening, PPS School Board, Superintendent and District Leaders. Approximately thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-five PFSP classified employees in over seventy job categories support students either directly or indirectly across this district. Almost six hundred of my members support the needs of special education students alone, working in the classroom as paraeducators, therapeutic intervention coaches, CNAs, occupational and physical therapists, sign language interpreters, and more. This year has been brutal. The superintendent pledged to return students to the classroom as soon as possible, citing the mental health and academic needs of our students. But after a year and a half at home, attending virtually, students needed more emotional support, not less. Our paraeducator staffing is in such crisis that PPS is providing retention bonuses to hopefully keep these paras at PPS for the entire school year. Classrooms are short-staffed and staffed with brand-new employees who have not had any kind of training. PPS has the financial resources to not only not make any staffing reductions, but to add staff and resources. but to add staff and resources. Let's make our students and staff a priority. Let's take those one-time funds and enhance the learning experience, providing more support to students and staff. The return to in-person learning was difficult at best. For many staff, it has been an untenable year full of staffing shortages, intense student needs, injuries, and pandemic fatigue. Let's learn from this year's experience and make next year a nurturing environment, improving the services our students need, and providing an enriched environment for all to learn and work. Thank you.
Thank you to Ms. Batten and Ms. Teal for your comments tonight. We're going to move on to the, I'm sorry, Americans with Disabilities Act. Superintendent Guerrero, would you please introduce this next item?
Yes, thank you Chair. In 1994, in response to the American with Disabilities Act, or ADA as we commonly refer to it, it recognized the importance of ensuring full accessibility to all facilities. District staff at the time developed an ADA transition plan. However, that plan was never fully implemented and is now surely outdated. So, in 2020, staff began the process of developing a new ADA transition plan with the primary purpose of providing an actionable and coordinated work plan for removing physical barriers across the district. The 10-month process included review and input from members of the disability community and resulted in a document that outlines the structural modifications necessary for equitable access to all district programming. I'd like to invite our Chief Operating Officer, Dan Young, who I know is accompanied here this evening, to provide a brief overview of the new plan. Thank you. Thank you, John Lines, for being with us.
Thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Directors, Superintendent, and Student Representative Weinberg. Thank you for the time today to discuss the ADA transition plan. Included in your packets tonight is a copy of the ADA transition plan, as well as a number of memos expanding on some of the key elements of the document. The draft ADA transition plan was presented to the Facilities and Operations Committee on December 9, and after incorporating provided feedback, again on January 19. At the January 19 meeting, the committee members agreed to move the plan to the full board for consideration. As some may recall, at the December 8 meeting, we reviewed the robust stakeholder and community engagement efforts that have informed the plan that is before you tonight, and highlighted our partnership with Fact Oregon and Community Vision that helped us reach families directly impacted by the physical barriers in our schools. The transition's primary purpose is to provide an actionable and coordinated work plan, removing architectural barriers, and the goal is to complete the work as quickly as possible. Recognizing that the district cannot immediately make all schools fully accessible, the district stakeholders and community members helped develop the four phases outlined in the plan. Phases 1 and 2 reflect the community priority of addressing main-level accessibility district-wide. Both of these phases have been fully funded by the 2020 bond, and we forecast completion of this work in 2028. Because the focus of Phase 1 and Phase 2 are on the building's main level, the entirety of the scope will be completed without the installation of new elevators, which is by far the most time-consuming, complex, and unpredictable retrofits necessary to provide barrier-free access to all schools. Phases 3 and 4, however, focus on multi-level accessibility, which will require the installation of 24 new elevators. As highlighted in the materials, several factors outside the district's control limit the number of elevators that can be installed in a given year, therefore driving the overall completion timelines. And to be sure, those timelines are estimates that forecast many years into the future and are undoubtedly imperfect, which is why you provide a range of completion in lieu of just one deadline. It's worth noting that one comment we heard repeatedly from the disability community and raised at every one of the town halls was the need to reengage with stakeholders and with the community prior to implementation of future phases. Unfortunately, the four-year rhythm of PPS's bond development planning efforts afford the district the benefit of engaging with the disability community prior to Phases 3 and 4 to assess assumptions and reaffirm priorities. We believe the outlined approach is rational, achievable, and the most flexible approach to meeting federal guidelines.
Thank you, Dan. So, providing opportunities for all students to participate fully in the educational and social dimensions of space is work that must engage us all immediately and continuously. This ADA transition plan represents a necessary foundation for providing equitable access to our schools. However, I want to emphasize again, as we have in previous presentations to the Facilities and Operations Committee, that the federal accessibility standards, like those outlined in the transition plan, are necessary but incomplete. The community was unequivocal during the engagement for this document. The ADA fails to meet an essential need for our students, specific examples of which were outlined in the December 8 committee presentation. In no way does an expanded view of accessibility undermine legal protections for individuals experiencing disability. The positive impact on the lives of millions is undeniable. But as we make progress on our commitment to this fundamental civil right, please bear in mind that the ADA is only one part of the accessibility picture for our students.
Okay, and with that, we're happy to take any questions you may have.
I think that, I know that the board has questions and comments about the plan. And I just want to say that I learned in talking about this, I learned something about the ADA that I thought I knew. Through design school in the late 80s, I heard about it, and we learned how to do universal design principles. But that the ADA is kind of a floor, it's a compliance, and it's not the full range of spatial, you know, spatial justice we're talking about. I just, I know that we've talked about the trade-offs. The board has asked what the trade-offs are about the timelines and what would happen if it was moved up. And I'm curious what activities we could do simultaneously. I was thinking about, can we, can we permit as we, can we permit as we're planning? I'm concerned about the impact on people of color, the disprofessionality of those intersectional identities. And I guess I'll open the floor up so we can hear from, I can hear from my fellow board members. But I just, I appreciate your work and attention that went into this and want to hear from my colleagues on their comments, concerns.
Thank you, Chair, to pass. I'm just curious, you talked about the stakeholders. What are our stakeholders saying about this ADA plan?
So, the stakeholder engagement primarily informed the structure, the content, and the phasing. The timeline was really developed internally and is presented here. The ranges, I think, are pragmatic, they're not ideological. But the support for the sequence of progression as we move through this was, I think, universal and unequivocal.
I thought it was interesting, in looking at the development of the plan, how the Phase 4 work was, you know, the lowest priority of the stakeholder groups in terms of, you know, how we can make the greatest, starting with work that makes the greatest impact. And, you know, I'm tremendously proud of our bond package for 2020, which assures first-floor accessibility in every single one of our schools. And for me personally, that was really important, and it was great working, you know, talking to so many people who were advocating for that, and that is well overdue at that time. So, that's a huge down payment toward really having the kind of schools that all of our kids deserve. So, my understanding is that all of that work will be done by 2028, sooner for our Title and CSI schools. So, it's prioritized with our RESJ lens for that work. So, and then, of course, we have ongoing work that makes our facilities less hostile, shall we say, to people with disabilities, some of which is not compliance-oriented. It is addressing things that those who put together the ADA didn't foresee or didn't address. So, that last piece about the elevators is the one hang-up here, as far as I see it. Because the majority of our buildings were built around World War II. They're ancient, they're many multi-level. We've got something on the order of 24 left, I think, that need elevators to assure that all students have access to all areas of their school building. And we have learned from experience that that's very difficult, time-consuming, and expensive work to do. And depending on the design of the building, in some cases extremely disruptive to students. And so, it's my understanding that that is what led to the very cautious timeline that projected out completion of some of those elevators as late as 41, 2041. And that is too long to wait. The question for us as policymakers is, how can we assure that this document aligns with our values around the urgency of this work and in having humane and welcoming environments for all of our students in every single one of our buildings, with the pragmatic reality of how we can execute that much work in our portfolio of ancient buildings? And so, you know, I think, I think that's the remaining issue. And I've talked to several of my board colleagues about this, and we had good discussions in the Facilities and Operations Committee. And I wanted to be really clear to the community that the district has not said that that is our goal, you know, to wait 20 years until we do all this work. It is, the district has said that is the outside, that is an outside reality of how long it might take to do that work. So, to me, I think the question at hand is, how do we, how can we feel confident that adopting this plan expresses the urgency that we feel around getting this done without creating completely unrealistic expectations about how to do it? And that's what I'm interested in hearing about from my colleagues. And I just want to restate that there's no question that we, as a board and as a district, are aligned on what our goals are here and on how urgently we want to do this work. And the greatest expression of that was how we prioritized access to every single building in our 2020 bond. So, we just need to carry that through. And before I quit blathering, just to make very clear, we can't commit any future board to anything. And so, that, those Phase 3 and Phase 4 works are presumed to be funded by the 2020 bond, our community, 2024 bond. Hopefully, our community continues our wonderful investments in our buildings. So, even any parameters that we put on this now is all dependent upon, you know, that a bond passes and that the board at the time and the community at the time prioritize that latter work to make up a huge chunk of it. And let's be clear, it would be a huge chunk of it. At this point, it's estimated to be more than $100 million worth of work. We've already got two high schools that we need to build on that, which are, at that time, going to be at least $200 million apiece. We've got some very strong statements and priorities around athletics and, you know, all sorts of other things. So, I guess I'll just introduce that last element to kind of muddy the water, and I want to hear from all of you. And I think Jackson's jumping at the bit over here.
Why don't you go ahead, Jackson?
Yeah, I was just going to agree with Director Constam, and I think she clarified my assumption that Phase 3 and 4 were assuming it would be funded through the 2024 bond. And then with that, because it costs so much, there is no way to accelerate this timeline for the phase start range to be any sooner. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, the phase start range for Phases 3 and 4 is presumably 2025, so that would be funded through the 2024 bond. It would just take about a year to start that up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Director Brum Edwards.
Yeah, so, I'm going to just, I want to just, I guess, start out by stating that I'm really proud of the board in spring of 2020 to put in the bond package the first four accessibility for all our school buildings, because that wasn't in the package. And there wasn't a sense of urgency to get this done. So, you know, I really think that the board taking a strong stand to make, to get started on the $100 million was a really important step. And that wouldn't have happened but for the board taking that action. And we still have work to do because of the $100 million, that's about $33 million. So, the remaining 65 is still out there. And when I look at the list of schools that don't, that under this plan wouldn't be impacted for another, potentially another 15 years, it's 24 buildings. And I guess the question for the staff and I asked this in advance is, if you're a student in one of those buildings that needs access to the second floor, what are your options?
The options for any facility that has those architectural barriers are either making accommodations for that specific student either within the building or somewhere else or changing programs. Those are going to be the options for all students until we have all of the architectural barriers removed.
So, if you live in a community that has access, you can access your neighborhood school. But if you don't, you, the accommodation may be you're accommodated at your non-neighborhood school.
Or in a different area of your school, correct?
A different area of your school. So, and it's just not just the elevators, but it's also the bathrooms and other changes that would be made in the second floor, correct?
Correct. So, when we talk about, for example, the main-level accessibility, it's everything in relation to that main level and those primary focus areas. Same thing for when we're looking at multi-floor accessibility. It is doing those improvements, also the additional improvements that are on those floors, such as fixtures or other improvements to bathrooms that need to go hand-in-hand with the elevators.
So, I said this in committee, and I wasn't supportive of bringing it with this timeline, because I do think that we can set a higher standard. And I love the work that was also presented as part of the committee's work and discussion, which was around accessible playgrounds, more accessible bathrooms, the acoustics. I mean, it really was an accessibility plan, not an ADA compliance plan. But the reality is, that should probably all be based on a foundation, which is being, meeting the minimal basic levels of ADA compliance. So, I think of that as the starting point. And I also think of like the big vision for our community is that instead of selling them on, I mean, it was kind of sad that we were selling them on the last bond, ADA compliance of a law that passed 50 years ago, and that was sort of the minimum floor, although I was really proud that voters embraced that and said they wanted that. But I do think having a much more ambitious plan besides just basic compliance is something that our community wants. I mean, just the joy of being able to play on a playground is something I think we want for all our students. So, from a longer-term perspective, I hope we embrace this bigger accessibility vision, because I think that's what, really what our students deserve. But I really think they also deserve just the very minimal requirements. And I had circulated earlier some language that changed the resolve that I'm happy to read. And we talked about having a discussion at just the dais to direct the superintendent to speed up the, or accelerate the planning, because 2041 seems a way distant time in the future. And so, I'm happy to offer the language now or let other people also share their point of view.
Let's hear from everybody as well. And if, yeah, if we wait till 2041, some of us up here will need accessibility as well, so.
And I'll just note, this boardroom is not accessible, and hopefully that's. And I'll just note, this boardroom is not accessible, and hopefully that's on, on the plan.
Yeah, it's painful. I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to speak. Director Green or Director Scott?
I'm sorry, I, I always have something to say, but on this, this seems a little straight, straightforward to me. It's, it's something that we need to do, but we just don't have all the money to get it done right now. And so we can't just say, I want it, and then not have the money to, to actually do it, and we can't start and then not be able to finish. So we need to figure out where the money is going to come from so that we can figure out what we can do now and then move accordingly and so-so. And then just, the reality is, as of right now, there are some schools where kids and community members are never going to see the top floor. And how, I mean, it, it is what it is, it sucks, but that's the reality. They're, they're never going to see the top floor, they're never going to be up there unless somebody picks them up, carries them up the stairs, wheels them around so that they can see it. And for some people, that, that might be the option of what they actually do, but for the, for the larger majority, until we're really ready to do something, we just got to get comfortable knowing that they're not seeing it. They're not going upstairs, they're not going down. Maybe they can go down if there's a ramp that goes down there, but they're not going up there. And if it's really important, and we feel like it is, and we cannot say what the next, the next board is going to do, but maybe it's possible for us to put something in policy that directs, that says that this is a, a priority that we have to make something like this happen. And, and so now, because if it's in policy that says that, you know, this is important to the school district as a whole, this is what we want, and maybe that can do it. But I, I don't know. I just know that something needs to be done, because I'm a, I'm getting older myself, I'm very young right now. I'm very young.
You won't be in a few years.
But when I, when I get to that place, I want to be able to go to the top floor anywhere. So.
That's Director Green with nothing to say. Imagine he has something to say. Thank you for your comments. Director Lowry also has some comments and.
And as the youngest school board member, just want to remind you of that, Director Green. I did want to just note that the ADA was passed in nineteen ninety, so it's only been around for thirty-two years, which is still a long time that we haven't been meeting the needs of these students. When we had the conversations about the ADA plan last year when we were looking at the bond, maybe the year before last, things blur because of the pandemic. One of the things I remember Dan and John was talking about capacity. So it isn't just a matter of funding, it's a matter of the construction crews and the availability. Could you speak to that a little bit about some of the capacity issues we might be facing if we up the timeline? And then Director Green, to your point about putting in policy, I think our strategic plan notes that, you know, two of our areas of focus of the strategic plan are equity and differentiation. And I know how our built spaces exist are part of how we're going to get to places of better equity and that ability to differentiate so that students can access the buildings and the spaces they need. But Dan and John, if you could speak to that capacity question, I think that would be helpful to me.
Yeah, absolutely. So on the capacity question, it's worth noting elevators are a highly specialized construction technique with very limited manufacturers in the Portland region. And it, it's just like any freeway. You, you add a number of cars, things start to slow down. So parts, delivery, supply chain issues have all come into sharp focus during the COVID-19 pandemic. Those were always the case in really specialized construction techniques. The other, the other timeline issue that warrants elevation here is opening up schools that are over a hundred years old. We've had elevator construction in the past that were scoped to take eight months that have taken four years, because once you open up a building that's a hundred years old, you're bound to discover soil conditions that you did not expect. So those, those are the two things that I would be cognizant of and, and inform the conservative timeline here.
I'll just add that, to John's point and, and the observation, that the driver around the timelines and the range that is in there is really about the constraints around installing new elevators in old buildings. It's not funding, even though the plan notes that certain things have, have to happen for there to be funding available. Board has to refer a bond, the voters have to approve a bond, it's going to be capital sources. It essentially assumes that that is going to happen. The driver is the ability to complete two dozen elevators in a short period of time is really a big challenge. And it's also, you know, it's projecting out many, many years in the future. It's certainly going to be wrong. That's why we tried to give a range of saying, if things go slower than would be ideal, I mean, ideal, we could do all this in two years, but you're going to be probably towards the latter end of the range. If things line up just perfectly, you might be closer to the front end of the range.
And just a follow-up to Director Lowry's question. So since 2012, when the last first bond passed, other than the modernizations, have any elevators been installed? Or is this the same, the same list? Or like, how many per year have we done? Are we, if we started in to the eleven, that if we even did one a year, that would have been eleven?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're in double digits outside of the modernization. So I think we're closer to completing maybe one a year or less than that. And they are multi-year projects. So it's not completing one year, it's starting one in a year and completing it a year. Usually, usually it takes us about two summers.
So we did one or less a year since 2012?
Right.
And have had a difficult time bidding that work.
That is correct. It is, it is challenging work to bid. There are limited, not just the elevator installers, there's also limited general contractors that compete for this type of work.
So I, I just want to clarify. So I think the key question, we, we've got a resolution to adopt the ADA transition plan today, and then Director Brum Edwards, I think you, this is your 530 amendment that would add some language around accelerating the timeline, correct? And that's sort of the, the conversation. And, you know, and I think, I guess I want to, I think there's some really interesting governance questions. I, I think it's safe to say that every one of us up here thinks the 2040 is too long, and frankly, I, I want to be ADA compliant next year, right? I mean, that's what I want to do. It's frustrating to me that boards ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago didn't put plans like this in motion, because we would be facing a very different situation now. So I think it's a positive step to do it. The question for us as a board is, do we set a conservative goal and then hopefully beat it? Or do we set what might be an overly ambitious goal and then potentially fail to meet it? And, and I think that's, it's a challenging question, right? Because on the one hand, you want to be ambitious enough that you're driving action, but on the other hand, it can really undermine public trust and frankly transparency if we say, we're going to do this by 2030, and we get to 2030, and we're, you know, we're halfway there, we're seventy-five percent of the way there. And I think the second part for us as a board, because what I've heard from staff is, we can get this done by 2040 and hopefully sooner, but you're sort of saying, look, given all these factors, some of which are under control, some of which are not, this is when we can get there. If we as a board say we want it done by 2030, I guess I want to know what the trade-offs are. And I'm not seeing that in, in the potential amendment that you've got. And I'm just thinking about the budget conversation we had today. And, you know, in order to get there, the 2020 bond, 2024 bond for sure, although I want to note, we've got two high schools that we promised the community that we're going to do in that bond. Director Holland's talked about athletics and committing a certain amount to athletics. We're now talking about ADA. It's pretty quickly, you know, that bond, I, I guess what I'm getting is, I, I don't know what the trade-offs are by sort of saying, we absolutely will include sixty, eighty, a hundred million dollars, you know, with inflation in that bond. I'm in support of that, I think, but I want to know what the trade-offs are. But then getting there by 2030 probably means operational reductions as well. And so I guess as a board, I don't want to say 2030 if it's going to mean additional teaching reductions in order to gain, you know, operating dollars that we can shift over to capital, which is absolutely a choice we have. It's not one I would be in support of. And so I guess I want to understand a little more.
I'm not sure, sure how it would be coming out of operating dollars, because this is contemplating, and I guess this also goes to Director Green's comment, that I, I believe the ADA transition plan, it's pretty clear, it all is dependent upon bond dollars, so.
So let me be clear, it doesn't, so, so is that, as a board, are we saying as a policy, it's only going to be bond dollars? Because it doesn't have to be. The district, just like any government, can spend any of our general fund dollars on, on capital if we choose. And that's why I want to make sure if we're saying 2030, I don't want to say 2030 unless we're going to do it and we're going to get there. But doing it and getting there means a lot of, it seems to me, it means a lot of trade-offs that might also really harm students. And, and even, if I think about the 2024 bond, doing those two high schools will actually make tremendous progress towards our ADA goals, right? So there's, there's some win-wins there. And, and I want to be really clear, these are not easy questions. I'm not saying, I mean, it's possible that those trade-offs are worth it. It's possible to get there by 2030 and serve our, you know, students, you know, with disabilities is the right thing to do, but I don't think we should pretend we can get there without having some cost. So I just want to understand a little more behind your amendment. What are the trade-offs you're contemplating to speed up the timeline by a decade?
Yeah, actually, the question about the bonds, I can't find the resolution right in front of me, but I'm pretty sure that the resolution bakes in, like, isn't that correct? That it's, that it's going to be funded by bonds? Because you're absolutely correct, you could use a construction excise tax, you could use, I mean, bond funding, but my whole assumption is this plan was built on, and I think it's pretty explicitly says, bond funding. So I was just riffing off of the staff piece of that, that it wouldn't be anything but bond funding. So that is contingent upon a bond passing. But it also would be saying very clearly in 2024, and, you know, I think, I look at the investments that were made in 2020, it was thirty-three million out of a 1.2 billion dollar budget and the, the bond, excuse me. And then the, the remainder is about sixty-five million, I think, is what was indicated. So if we had a bond of a similar size, it's what, five, five percent? And yes.
But I think, I think this conversation is too simplistic, because what we've just heard is, even if we have the funding, do we have the capacity? So I think if we say, we're going to pass all these bonds with all this money, if we can't hire the contractors, if we don't have the time, and if it takes four years to do an elevator that we think will take eighteen months, I, I'm really worried about us over promising and under-delivering here. I agree with what Director Scott said, that we all want the ADA compliance now, and I wish that the boards, like in the early 2000s, had taken on that mantle. And, you know, but if we, if we can't hire people to do the work and we promise that to our community, I'm not okay with that. I think we need to be clear and honest about, it's not just funding, it's the capacity to do the work. And, and there are paths, like you're saying, Director Brum Edwards, to maybe get that funding, but if we don't have that capacity, we, we cannot accomplish these goals.
So I just, I want to respond, because I was interrupted when I was.
I apologize, please go ahead.
When I was speaking, Director Lowry, is that, you know, there was a bond in nineteen ninety-five, and there actually were some elevators and other ADA improvements that were made. And then there was a time when all funding that was raised, whether it was the ITAX, the local option, all went to operations because there wasn't the funds for that. But in nineteen ninety-five, there, there were investments made. And now that we have the funds and that we're on a cycle, it seems like a very logic, and I say, I'm, was basing my amendment on the premise that staff had, had used, which is that there would be bond funding. And, you know, I think it's, I think it's a good question whether, because I, I did ask beforehand and maybe our general counsel could answer whether there is, is there any sort of penalty if we don't, if we set a, a timeline and we don't, we don't make it? Because what I, what I've found, my experience is, you set a late timeline and, like, you usually meet that later timeline versus setting a more aggressive timeline and trying to meet it. And so I guess my question is, is there, is there a penalty? Because I, my understanding from.
Yeah, there's no, there's no penalty, there is, except lack of public trust or failure, you know, decline.
Well, yeah, but there's a very. I guess a bigger lack of public trust is not actually moving with due speed or being more aggressive. I mean, and I think we should ask, I think we should ask.
I mean, let's play this out. So first of all, sixty-five million dollars is, it's what's left before with inflation. By the time we get to 2024, it's, it's going to be eighty to a hundred million. But fine, I think you could probably get seven of us to say, put that in the bond. What I hear staff saying is, even if you put that hundred million dollars in the bond and it passes, they can't get the work done by 2030. Maybe if we put two hundred million dollars in the bond, we could hire a whole bunch more construction project managers, we could bring outside firms in from out of state, you know, if we can't get, you know, people in state to do the work. Those are the kind of trade-offs I want to understand to get there. Because what I hear staff saying is, we can't get there by 2030, and I hear you saying, but I want to get there by 2030. And again, I want to get there by 2030, too.
I didn't hear them say two hundred million and a whole.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm saying that in order to accelerate ahead, we're going to have to do something radically different, which will be much more expensive in order to get there. Maybe that's the right thing to do, but I don't feel like we've had that conversation. This amendment doesn't get at what those trade-offs are.
I want to, I want to, I want to cut down on the, on the back and forth, because it's not very effective. I, I wonder, so I, I've had a project once where I had to hire forty steel workers from, not from Portland, they didn't have forty steel workers here. And so I, I wonder about the possibility of hiring firms that have the capacity that aren't here, that maybe they're on the West Coast, maybe they're in Seattle. There's elevators going in all over town right now. Ritz Carlton is a big one. It's a different project. I'm wondering if it's helpful to hear the will of the board, the, our value system and what we value without, you know, our values are around getting this completed as quickly as possible. But we also want to be intentional about, you know, how we do it and who's harmed and who's brought on. And so I'm just wondering, rather than this back and forth, if we want to put the amendment on the table or if we want to go back to the committee and consider.
Chair to pass, I'd like to make a comment, just something we haven't touched on, and it's related to Director Scott's point about honesty and transparency with the public. I mean, no, there's no penalty if we set an ambitious goal and we don't meet it. And, and that's what we're talking about here, if we make a performative statement about how we want to accelerate our goals. However, it's really serious business if we make representations to the voters in the course of a bond campaign that we know are incorrect. And, and that needs to be pointed out. You know, if we go to the voters in 2024 saying, you know, this bond includes money for, to finish the rest of our elevator work, and we're going to be done by 2030, even though we know that we don't have the capability to do that, that's fraudulent communication to the voters.
I'm sorry, but I've pointed personal privilege, because that's not what was represented in the amendment, and.
No, no one said that it was, but that's an important point.
That's what implied, that there was some sort of fraudulent statement.
No, it is an important point, because we, we need, we have a promise to voters, and so we need to, when we put bond language together, we need to be sure that we're, you know this.
Having ran the last bond campaign, yes.
So I think it's an important consideration, I appreciate you bringing that up. I, I'm wondering if we have any other comments, and I'm.
We have some public comment.
When we do have some public comment, why don't we take public comment? It sounds like there's a lot more discussion that needs to happen on this.
Actually, I think Director Holland had a, did you still want to make a motion?
I'd like to hear the public comments first.
Thank you, thank you, yes. So Ms. Baratza, do we have public comment?
We do. We have Jeff Zerba.
Thank you, thank you both for your presentation tonight.
Hi, my name is Jeff Zerba, and thank you for allowing me to testify.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
I can honestly say, well, first of all, let me just talk a little bit about myself. Happens to be, I started working for Portland Public Schools in nineteen ninety, and this is my thirty-second year of teaching at Cleveland High School and coaching wrestling at Cleveland High School. And yes, I have been one of those people that have been carried up around to the top floor and to every other place in many schools in this district. And what I'm hearing by this board has been pretty discouraging, that we don't want to be aggressive, that we don't want to have some sort of public opinion. This is something that you definitely need to be aggressive about and definitely find the capability to do these things. And I like what I heard about looking outside of the district and looking at other cities. You know, if you, if you were trying to promise a deadline of twenty years, I've been here thirty years, and I'm still every day fighting to get down this ramp, to find a place to park outside. Even in my own high school, they, they put in key cards for us to get into school, but not one at the accessible entrance. So it took three and a half months for me to, and our district, or our school to get a place for me to get into the building. So, you know, it's not a matter of going, you know, in the front door, it's a matter of getting in the building. I don't care if it's the front door, if it's the back door, but this is discouraging. And what I'm hearing from this board is discouraging. I think not only students, teachers, community members have the right to be legally and ethically have the right to be getting into. to be getting into these schools and get to that top floor. And 20 years, 20 years is, is not acceptable. And if you can be aggressive and build 15 elevators instead of five elevators in the next 10 years, that's helping community members, that's helping staff, that's helping people have equal rights and equal, equal opportunities. And right now, that's not the case with this district. And I hope, I hope that you can reconsider moving up that timeline and shooting for that 10-year goal instead of that 20-year goal, because I think, I think your constituents have that right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Dr. Ayesha Moussa, and she is attending virtually.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Ayesha Moussa. My last name is spelled M like Mary, U S like Sam, A. My pronouns are they or she. I hold a BA and an MAT from Portland State and a PhD from Harvard. I'm addressing you this evening as a concerned, disabled, tax-paying citizen of Portland. My family has a history with the Portland Public Schools. My maternal grandfather was a teacher and principal in Portland throughout the 1920s, 30s, and 40s. In 1965, I was denied entry to my neighborhood school, Buckman Elementary, because I am disabled. My family was told that I could only enroll in the Holiday Center for the handicap. My mother and I visited the Holiday Center. I don't remember anything about the school, but I will never forget my mother's reaction. We got back in the car, and she turned to me, and she said, you're not going to that school. I would not send my pet pig to that school. You're going where you can get an education. And we were members of St. Francis of Assisi Parish, and at that time, they had an elementary school. So my mother arranged to cook breakfast and lunch in the school kitchen five days a week, so that my brother and I could attend. I share that story with you tonight, because nearly 60 years later, nearly 50 years since the Education of All Handicapped Children's Act, and more than 30 years since the ADA, the Portland Public Schools is considering taking another 20 years to provide full access. Access delayed is access denied to another generation of disabled students. My generation, my children's generation, my grandchildren's generation, and my great-grandchild's generation. If this plan goes through with this timeline, my great-grandchild will graduate from high school before she will see disabled children wherever they want to be or need to be in her schools. This is unacceptable. This transition plan with the current timetable continues the longstanding segregation and marginalization of disabled students in Portland, and we would not accept this for communities of color any longer. We cannot accept this for disabled community as well. This is an unacceptable timeline. And as the previous speaker said, we have a responsibility to be aggressive and meet the needs and civil rights of all students in Portland. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Angela Jarvis-Holland. Jarvis-Holland, sorry.
Welcome, Angela.
I'm going to ask each to just take a deep breath, because this is really heavy and painful for me. And I think that there's probably part that's painful for you. So if you just take a breath with me, and I'll try and find the words. It's incorrect to say there's a mandate from our disability community. There were many people boycotted the process that went on, because we knew the questions that would be asked. We'd already given you our stories, our lives, our answers, our truths. I need every one of you to know that you manage this current situation by the busing and segregation of children all over the city. And disproportionately, that is children of color, because more privileged people like myself figure out a way to fight for a place nearer their home. But many children of color are still on buses going across our city. This is not a fight between the illogical emotional and the, let's not break a promise. This is a time for us to think about the last two years. This is a time for us to think about Black Lives Matter, the disruption of COVID, and grow some courage. This is an important moment, and I ask you to sit with it. This is profound, and I will remember each face here. And I will be a messenger to my community. I represent 5,000 families. Not one of them would thank you for 20 years. They will be crushed. I have been an advocate on the bonds for 14 years, and it's justice denied, as my colleague Ayesha said. And it is time, and I'm just, we need to get beyond what is obvious. There are always more than one, there's always more than one path. People with disabilities are so creative. They have taught me so much. They find ways to do things that we would just say were impossible, constantly. Let's take that example, and let's say, let's look again. Where is somebody else that could put in elevators? How else could we do that? This is a big moment, and I want to be out fighting for that bond with you, like I fought last time, like my son at the end of the last bond video, I hope you all saw it, that young people made, said, finish it in the next bond. We are the largest minority in the country. Let us be with you. Let us link arms and figure this out. Let's not just come, and there are good people that did the ADA plan, finally did an ADA plan after so many years of not having one. But really, we have to look beyond the obvious. And I'm going to say, in the name of equity, the name of justice, the name of love for each other. And Ayesha, I thank you for your words. I rest on the shoulders of the warriors like Ayesha, somebody that was declared dead when she was born, and somebody that has a degree, she's a doctor from Harvard. We can't throw away lives. So I apologize for being as emotional. But believe me, the, the choice of missing a deadline versus speaking to 20 years, I know which one you need to choose, and I'm, I'm praying to God and to all the powers that be that you can see beyond some of the challenges. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your words. And Dr. Moussa, thank you for your words as well. I, I think we have a, I'm not sure, process-wise, if we need to, how to move through this, whether we do accept an amendment, put it on the table, or whether we go back to the committee to, to work through the language.
I was going to offer amendment, but I actually, if it's the will of the board, I think it's better to table the resolution and have the committee have a discussion about it.
A robust.
Then I also think it could answer some of Dr., Dr.
Doctor. Wow.
Director Scott. Wait your turn. Director Scott's questions and some other issues that bring up, I just think we'll have a better outcome, and to be able to answer some of those questions.
Yeah, I mean, after that testimony, I'm not ready to support this at all. I mean, I, I want to be really clear, and just to make sure that it was heard, I want us to be ADA compliant next year. And if there is a way to get there, let's get there. And it sort of raises for me, well, why don't we set next year as a goal? Well, everyone said, well, you can't do that. Why don't we set three years as a goal? We can't do that. But nine years, maybe, you know, so, yes, absolutely. Let's go back to that committee and work through. And what I would ask is that the superintendent and his staff, you know, bring the folks who testified today, and I know there was a lot of engagement, so I know as part of this process that already has occurred. But I'm a big believer that there are concrete solutions, and I'm also a big believer that everyone can understand barriers, right? And particularly, the folks we've heard about today, they're familiar with barriers their entire lives. Let's talk about the barriers that we think exist, and then let's figure out if there are ways to, to knock those down and, and get there quicker. But also, let's see if we can come to an agreement, right? Because if it's a 10-year plan, 15-year plan, 20-year plan, or it's a five-year plan, that would be even better.
So Director Scott, is that a second to her motion?
I guess, no, I didn't get the first motion.
If you give me a second, I'll call you a doctor.
Do we, do we have a motion on the?
I would just offer you, the motion, the original motion isn't on the table. I think you can agree with consensus, unless you have an objection, to send it back to committee, or we can go through multiple rounds.
To just not introduce it.
I think, do we, do we have consensus to send it back to the committee?
Consensus to send it back.
Yeah. That sounds fantastic. Thank you, and thank you. I think the questioning, you know, will make the outcome stronger. I just want to say, I'm, I'm in support of accelerating the timeline to the extent that we can, and look for elevator installers up and down the West Coast as far as we need to, and really lean into our values around inclusion. I also want to mention that there's an excellent example of a historic building. It's on the register of historic places, that has an ADA-compliant elevator. And it's a brick building. It's the North Portland Library. It's not far from here. It's near Jefferson High School. And it's a beautiful example of an addition of an ADA-compliant elevator that gets to the second story of that historic building. It's gorgeous. So I encourage you to go take a look at how that, how that looks.
Chair to pass, I want to just take a second to thank a couple people. Angela Jarvis-Holland, for your persistent adv- oops, sorry, for your persistent advocacy, and also just for your willingness to engage with me personally, and the journey that we've come on together in terms of crafting, you know, the language for the last bond, and making sure that we got that down payment in the last bond. But also just pushing all of us to really think about all these issues as the human rights issues that they are, the universal human rights issues that they are. And also, I want to thank John Lyons, who has been our staff lead on this work, who is so deeply committed to an accessible environment for all of our students and families, and who lives and thinks about these issues all day, every day. And it's, it's terrible to be burdened with the constraints of pragmatism. Nobody, nobody wants to make those arguments, but it's our responsibility to be aware of what they are and see how we can bust through them as best we can. But, John, this plan is like, it has inordinately elegant and artful language. You're a beautiful writer, and you, it, it's very, it has a very humane tone to it, as it should. So I just want to honor and thank you for all your work on this. And I think this conversation has made us all better and has made this effort better.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Say something. I want to thank the board for listening to the, to the community. I was talking to the superintendent this morning, and, you know, there are some things that PPS can really, you know, I just see in the future that we can be like a shining example, like, not just that we're in compliance, but that we have schools that are accessible for kids to do joyful things, not just the minimum compliant things. And we have that opportunity with the climate policy that's coming up, with the strategic plan about what we're going to do to better support our students. So I view this as just like a massive opportunity to, with our community, really be leaders and sort of embrace and walk our talk on accessibility. And I, I know our community will be with us, because when I chaired the bond, and I went into the editorial boards with Angela and other members of the community, it was super compelling. That was, that and the vision of the remodel of Jefferson and the Center for Black Student Excellence is what got us over the finish line, a huge, huge, the largest bond in state history. And it's a pretty challenging economic time. People voted for it because they wanted that vision, and I think we can do that again, and we shouldn't aim low, but aim high. And so I really appreciate the board's willingness to try and aim high, and the superintendent being there, right there with us, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your comments. I, I agree. We should aim high. We should, we should always, we should always aim high. I'm going to move us forward to an update on, and thank you all for engaging so considerately, and thank you for staff for hearing us out. We're going to go next to an update on Portland Public Schools' board zone redistricting. Vice Chair Scott, would you introduce this next item?
Yes, I will, and I recognize we're about an hour behind, so we're going to move as quickly as we can through this. It is an important issue, so I don't want to shortchange it. I'll give a little bit of a, of an opening, but, and we also have a guest who's been waiting from Portland State, I believe. I was going to join us virtually, so I want to make sure we get to that. So just to give a little, and, and also just to say, this is the start of a conversation, so there's going to be lots more. So we can, you know, definitely get some questions on tonight, but we don't have to resolve everything tonight. So due to, due to recent legislation, House Bill 3310 and the 2020 census, Portland Public Schools' school board zones need to be realigned and rebalanced. Those zones generally need to be rebalanced whenever there is a census every 10 years. And, and I, I should actually just clarify for anybody listening, this does not change school boundaries. So these are the zones that school board members are elected from. It does not change school boundaries, so it's only, really impacts us. But.
Viral on Facebook.
I know, right? It's like, what? But the general rule around these, and use for state legislative districts, is there should not be more than a 10% deviation in population between the largest and smallest zones. And based on population growth and other changes and shifts over the last 10 years, it's expected that our Portland Public Schools' zones now differ in size by more than 10%, and that requires rebalancing. We did request from the Population Research Center at Portland State a proposal for two different scenarios. There are obviously infinite number of scenarios. We requested two for new boundaries for board member electoral districts that meet these, the current requirements. And tonight, we want to share those two proposals and have an opportunity to hear from PSU. And the other thing I will say, I'll turn it over to staff in just a second, is that there, there is a, there is, I've been thinking about this entire issue in sort of different tranches or phases. There is the stuff we are required by law to do, and we're going to talk about that today, and that we need to do as a result of the census. There's also potentially some things that we want to do. And this is something that boards for a long time, but definitely, you know, since I've been on, but I know long before that, have talked about our at-large system of elections, and the historical, and the fact that those at-large systems are rooted in historical racism and white supremacy. And so there is a real desire on my part, and I think I speak for others as well, both on the board and in the community, of saying, is now the time, as we're doing this update on the census, to also say, is at-large the best way to elect people, or should we be moving towards elections by zone? And a lot of people don't even realize, you have to live in the zone, but you get elected by the entire district. And then there are even more extensive changes, like, you know, I mean, I will just say personally, I would love to allow 16 and, and 17-year-olds to vote in school board elections. I think that's something that would be incredibly good for student engagement, for, you know, and the people who are really directly being impacted. There's also proposals other districts have done nationwide, allowing undocumented immigrants to vote, you know, and, and so other types of campaign finance reform, those types of changes. I think about this as, we have to do something very quickly to meet the legal definitions. There's also potentially a little bit more we could do and still meet our timelines. And then there are these other, what I consider good government changes, that probably can't be done prior to the 2023 election, but I don't want to take off the table. And what I would love coming out of this is, what do we need to do now? And do we have a plan to look at some of those other things moving forward? So also sort of set that as the overall context, from my perspective. And I should also note that Directors Brim Edwards and Holland's are on the Elections Task Force. We've only met once so far. We'll be meeting every two weeks going forward and bringing updates back to the board as we sort of go through this process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Courtney Westling, Director of Government Relations, Kate Wilkinson, Assistant General Counsel, and I think from the PSU Center for Population Studies, it's Ethan Sherrigan, who will be joining us virtually.
Great. So Kara, can you? Am I, you're running the slides, right, am I? Okay. Oh, Terry's got them, okay. You got it. Thank you. Okay. So Director Scott, you mentioned some of the things I'll hit here, but we do this every 10 years. The population changes, people move in and out of zones, and move in and out of the city. And so we need to readjust to get back down to that 10% number. We're at about 12% right now. We're at about 12% right now. Again, I'll say it one more time, loud and clear. This does not change school boundaries. So this is really about how many people are in the zone that you represent. And then where we are right now, so total PPS population is about 520,000, slightly less. And the target for each zone is a little less than 75,000. So 74 to 55 is sort of that target number. So this is where we are right now. These are your numbers. So you'll see the top, the zones 1 through 3 are over and the last four are under. So we need to balance them out. Okay, so Population Research Center, Ethan is here. And so we'll go to the maps in a second, but there are two proposals. One is Plan A, or Preservation, which preserves most of what's currently the boundary lines. And then Plan B is a realignment or a little bit more focused on natural boundaries, high school attendance zones. For example, I think a good example is Director Scott's zone, which currently serves Selwood, even though most of it's in southwest Portland. So Plan B, or the realignment option, would keep him on one side of the river. So I'm going to see if this works. I don't think I did that. I think Kara's doing this. Okay, I thought I magically somehow did that and I didn't even push anything. It was all in here. It did not. That was not me. Kara, thank you. Or Terry. Terry, whoever's doing this. So this is Option, or Map A, the minimally adjusted version. And Ethan's here. Ethan, can you introduce yourself? I feel like I'm...
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to do that. I'm Ethan Sherrigan. I'm the Director of the Population Research Center at PSU. And among the main things we do is redistricting at the state local level. So if you have trouble with those PDFs, I also have the maps up here. I'd be happy to see the screen. I'm not sure what the display situation is there.
Yeah, I think, so the way that we, these two maps that we're sharing are A and B. And I don't know if we can put them next to each other. Terry, if you can make that magically happen, amazing. If you can't, it's also okay. And these maps have major streets. They're not going to go down to the neighborhood level because that would be too confusing and too hard to read probably on these maps right here. But they are in your packet. The data that goes along with these are also in your packet. And those are going to include demographic information as well as the numbers that I showed earlier in the slides about how many people are in the zones.
And just to add to that, a minor addition, there also are zone-specific maps that are included in these.
Yes.
According to...
Ethan, can you please repeat what you just said?
Yes. So there are also, each zone has a one-page dedicated map that is at a higher zoom level there. So more of those major streets and other features are shown, as well as the boundaries of attendance zones. And I focus on high school attendance zones because there's less change at that level. I think that's one of the interesting parts of the ORS 332.132 that in addition to rebalancing at the time of the federal census, there is that directive to take into account attendance areas to the extent possible. So that was the motivation to provide that realignment plan. But the nice thing about that is that any changes that would be made to attendance zones in order to achieve equity goals or other goals of the board and district could, by being tied to the board zones, could automatically be reflected in future updates. Yeah, so I think you're seeing there on the left now the Plan B and on the right the Plan A. You can see that...
So Ethan, the map on the right is the preservation scenario?
Yeah. And those both look like the change, scenarios that do reflect change. So yeah, in both cases, Zone 7 becomes limited to East of the River. Oh, sorry. Yeah, East of the River goes to Zone 7.
So maybe what would be helpful, Ethan, is if you can share some of the main changes between the two scenarios. Obviously, we heard one of them.
Yeah. So I wonder if it's possible for me to share my screen? Or not?
Yes, you can do that.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thanks, Terry.
I will look for that ability right now. I'm getting a message that I can't begin while the other participant is sharing.
Oh, got it. Okay. He's going to stop. There we go. There you are.
All right.
We can see you.
Okay, so I will now... So you all, if this was successful, should be able to see a stylized map. Okay, that's great. What you're seeing right now are the current zones. And so what I can do is overlay the, or toggle between the current, I can just stick by district, between the current and the proposed zones, starting with Zone 1, the southwest. So the plan, which would keep the shape of the district as much as possible while attaining the goals of rebalancing districts, would be moving the boundary between Zones 1 and 7 aligned to the river and to extend the boundary of Zone 1 to the northwest following the highway 26 as the northern boundary and northwest. On the other hand, and then for this Zone 1, it's quite similar between the two plans. So I'll show that briefly. But in both cases, the lines are nearly the same. Okay, I'm going to go back to the current zones. And now over to Zone 2. So Zone 2, in the Plan A, the plan showing continuity is overlaid. The major changes, there's some minor changes along the northern border here. If I load this other map, it may become more clear. The red dashed lines are the current zones. And the colored lines represent the proposal in Plan A. So there's some change along the northern part of Zone 2 and the southeastern part.
And this is the preservation scenario?
That's right. Yeah. This is the minimum amount of change that was needed in order to equalize the population of each district. And when that changes were necessary, we made every attempt to follow attendance boundaries or neighborhood boundaries, but tried not to make large-scale changes where it was not necessary. And the plan, which makes more significant changes, you can see Zone 2 probably has the largest difference between the two plans. Zone 2 then follows... And I'll show the attendance zones and how, if you have the PDFs in front of you, you may be able to see it more clearly and will be able to see it. I'm not sure how large the screen is for you, but the attendance zones for Zone 2 necessitated a larger change. Taking a while to load. But so Zone 2 has the largest difference between the two zones. And if it's taking too long for these maps to load, then I'll encourage you to look at the materials in front of you and the specific zones, specific maps for each district. Yeah. So Zone 2 then incorporates the area of Alameda and Irvington now without having this red line, which you can see, split Zone 2 and its neighboring zones. So next, we can look at Zone 3, the northwest. Again, like Zone 1, there's not as many changes out in here. So the red line here is the current boundary of Zone 1 and also both Plan A and Plan B. So as we saw before, in both cases, the boundary of Zone 3 moves north in the kind of, what we say, the northwestern part of southwest Portland. So south of the highway goes to Zone 1. And that's really the most significant change in Zone 3. Zone 4 in Plan A extends east. Again, this red line here represents the previous boundary of Zone 4. And then the new boundary extends east all the way past the airport, kind of almost to Park Rose. There's some other minor changes here, mainly to follow neighborhood boundaries more closely or major roads, which the boundaries were already drawn along. District 5, actually, before we go to District 5, I'll show Plan B for District 4.
Hey, Ethan, just to stop you for a second. I think in your report, you did note that you did sort of verify existing board members would still be in the newly drawn zones. Is that the case?
Yeah, that's an important point to mention. So I think we did not specifically try to achieve that goal. You know, our overtion goal is to make sure that the districts or that the zones represented meaningful units of geography. But after coming up with initial proposals, I did get information about the locations of their current residences and did verify that no incumbents would be moved into the district other than the one that they currently represent.
Good. I appreciate both that you didn't intentionally do it and that you also verified in case anyone had that question. So thank you.
I don't want to sell my house.
So looking at District 5, again, we can start with the baseline zones. I'll show those District 5 and that's the northeast part of Portland. Look at this line here on the border to District 2 is the one that I'll draw most of your attention to, although we can see also that the northern part of it changed as well. So the new boundary is District 5. I'll show it here, so it extends further to the east. And then this becomes a new line. This is with the minimal change. So even with the minimal change, the northern part of the district still was ceded to District 4. But these are really densely populated areas in the south. So areas that were picked up in the south around the Laurelhurst to kind of complete, to make sure all of the neighborhood was in one zone rather than split between two zones. Actually...
Of course. Also, on District 5, the one you have up here, that dark blue line is where it stops?
Yeah, the part where these two are, yeah, District 5 is shown in kind of a purple. So where it reaches the...
So I actually will be outside of that. I'll actually move it to Zone 4 because my house is literally right over there by Fernhill Park.
Hmm, okay.
See that little circle right there? That little curve? That's my house. The second curve, oh, yeah, right, no, down a little bit, down a little bit.
Moved recently?
Down a little bit. Nope, down a little bit more. That curve right there, yeah, that little curve, that's my house. So yeah, we can't do that. No, he didn't. He couldn't.
I'm glad that you pointed that out. So maybe we had some issue with the geocoding of the address. So I'll make sure.
He said he wasn't being intentional about that.
Nothing personal, I promise.
He just booked me out.
Hey, Ethan, can you...
So you don't want to just move across the block?
Can you talk about the distinction between the census level, the census tract level, and the block level?
Yeah, sure. So one of the reasons that we do redistricting after each decennial census is that we get information about individual blocks. And that only happens once every 10 years. We get updates on tracts more frequently. But tracts are aggregations of census blocks. So census blocks are kind of the most fundamental level of census geography. They may have as few as, you know, 100, even less people, even fewer people. There are many of them that are just empty. Tracts are aggregations of blocks that will, you know, on average have 4,000 people. So they're much larger. And when we do the redistricting, we want to do it on a basis of census blocks. Now, we get less data for blocks. You know, all of the kind of rich socioeconomic data about, you know, income and language and so on, those are not released by the Census Bureau at the block level. We have very accurate counts of how...
Those data are not available at the block level, but the SES is available at the tract level?
That's right. Okay, so some adjustment then, maybe between the boundary of District 4 and 5. So that seems to be an oversight. But I'm pretty confident that that would not, you know, would not throw a big wrench in these plans. And I should emphasize, these are obviously predetermined. So the goal of today's meeting is to get feedback like that on things that we may have missed or, once you've had a chance to look at the maps, you know, flagging issues where we may have actually inadvertently divided a community that really oughtn't to be divided in the view of the board or the public. So the goal is to get as much feedback and take it back with a version 2.0. Once we both have remarks about the plans, as well as some chance for the board to consider and decide which direction is the most appealing for the redrawing of the boundaries.
Yeah. And I think, at least with Zone 5, when you go down Killingsworth, you're literally splitting the Cully neighborhood. So even if you went, you're splitting the Cully neighborhood from, almost from 42nd all the way down, you're splitting the neighborhood into two.
I'm going to, yeah, that's excellent feedback and I'm going to make a note of that. This is one, you know, one significant change where, you know, this plan that's called the Preservation Plan doesn't really hold true to its name because this was a very large significant change, even in that minimal change plan. So that's very helpful. All right. That's not a mandate today. Okay, so let's look for a second what District 5 looks like in Plan B, the realignment to high school attendance zones. So I think you'd be happy to see it looks like in Front Hill Park, Mouse Bay, and in this Zone 5. In this plan, the resulting shape of the issue is quite different from how it looked before. These living boundaries, you can see in purple. And that's in order to capture the differences in the attendance zones here. Okay, so I'll move on to Zone 6 then. Another one where there are very significant differences between the two plans. So again, this is the current boundary of Zone 6. You can see that extends north of 84 into this part of the city. And then it has this boundary here to the west that probably depends on 2. But there's very significant changes here in the southeast because that's the way that the shape of the high school attendance zone here looks. So the minimal change plan for Zone 6 has the boundary... has the boundary moving south to the 84, and west to take on some additional population. Can I help for that, which was in this area that was previously in Zone 6? So now, I'm worried that everyone, I'll make sure I have addresses and everything of folks, make sure that they're also...
Don't worry, I am dead center.
But, yeah, keep your eye on that as you're looking at these maps. That's helpful to know, you can go to either now or in and out. Yeah, so this is the minimal change version of Zone 6, and I will put these out of the...
I'm curious about these zones when we look at the tables from the baseline to the Plan Version 1, the minimal, to the realigned. And I'm wondering about undercounts of communities of color.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Particularly in some of the, I'm thinking of District 6, where, which is a pretty diverse, it's a pretty diverse community, but I don't know that it's reflected in these tables here.
I think the tables can be difficult sometimes from the top, because the only data we get for redistricting is total population and then population by race. And so, sometimes the data by race can be difficult to interpret, because the census race question has some, you know, well-known, long-recognized flaws. We know, for example, that there's confusion over what it means to, you know, to check white or other race, especially for folks who first indicate Hispanic ethnicity. That's a well-known problem that results in some complications of accounts. I mean, the only thing that could be said is that, you know, because the 2010 and 2020 census used the same question, that we should be able at least to compare how those district changes would look across the decade, you know, in an apples-to-apples comparison. I think your point is, as well taken though, that sometimes we really want to look at the additional data on language or other things that can capture communities of interest beyond just race, ethnicity question on the census. That's one of the limitations. I think undercount is a concern. The Census Bureau is currently undertaking its own studies to understand the extent of differential undercount. I think one thing I can say is that it looks like some of the groups that may have been undercounted in the American Community Survey, which is what we use in the years when we don't have census. That's, you know, what we're discussing at the tract level or even the block group level. That's the area we would be looking at. We actually see more indications of diversity by race and ethnicity in the 2020 census than we do in the American Community Survey. So, that's one thing that should give us a little more confidence in its fitness reviews.
Thank you. I thought that American Community Survey was more accurate, had more accurate demographic data than the decennial. But are you saying that that's reversed here?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that the decennial, we should have greater confidence in what we see in the decennial, in this case, than what we see in the ACS. You know, it's a little, kind of an underappreciated fact, actually, that the age-sex structure and also the race ethnicity in the ACS, it's a random sample, but it actually gets weighted. It gets weighted so that, you know, households that respond, the overall pool, the overall response is weighted to look like an externally-generated tally of the population from the Census Bureau's Population Estimates Program. So, you know, small team ethnologists, the Census Bureau actually tries to track changes in race, ethnicity, and the age-sex structure. And that actually becomes an input to the ACS. So, all of that is just to say that the ACS actually can have very significant biases too. I think that the 2020 census does seem to have some problems. We've been studying undercount in the census. It looks like the problems, especially, are significant in rural areas or American Indian lands. We don't see as many issues in urban areas and in Portland. I think the problems are there, but I do think that the decennial is, for this purpose, more appropriate than the ACS. And more reliable.
Ethan, you want to go ahead and finish up with Zone 6 and 7? Thank you.
Yeah. So Zone 6 is extended to now to extend to the southeast where it previously would have ended at this north-south line along... Holgate, yeah. So Holgate used to be another south quarter of that, and now it's in the southeast. And then finally, Zone 7. So in the baseline was this kind of rectangular piece in southeast Portland, ending now, they're excluding some part of the southeast now, which is moved to Zone 1 in both plans. Plan 1 maintains the rectangular shape and takes on the additional populations necessary here to create a contiguous area, ceding this population in or to Districts 2 and 6. Plan B makes a more significant change. As a result of having to follow the high school attendance zones, it now, in order to achieve enough population, has to extend north. The boundary with Zone 2 extends north to, yeah, Belmont Street. So I hope that's a hopeful, you know, just walk through what you may see before you in the PDF. We have the higher resolution maps of each district, or of each zone, rather, as well. And if you guys need that, that can come after we had a chance to look at the maps, and we'll be incorporating the revisions before next time that we meet.
Great, thanks. Ethan, if you can just hold on for a few minutes, do we want to go through the remaining slides? And then just do a really quick round of board questions, and we'll talk about next steps.
Sounds good. I will wait for Terry to get back to the slides. Thank you, Terry. Okay. So, that was sort of step one, is the realignment based on the decennial census. And now, we're going to switch gears a little bit to talk about how we vote for board members. So I'm going to kick it to Kate for that conversation, and then we'll talk about timelines, and then we'll be done.
Thank you. Good evening, Directors. Kate Wilkinson, Assistant General Counsel for the District. As Director Scott outlined, we also are looking at different ways that the Board can vote, so methods of voting. Again, PPS School Board currently uses at-large voting, so all districts have to live in their zone, but they're elected citywide. And the option is, the Directors can be elected by zones. So you live in your zone, and you're elected by that zone only. Oregon law also provides that districts can have a combination of at-large and by-zone. And you just have the statutory site there. The majority of districts in Oregon, at least from my research, vote the way Portland votes. Come from zones, elected citywide. Salem, last time they went through this, last fall, had a very serious discussion initially about looking at changing voting, and they decided not to make that change, just as a point of information. There was a bill passed in 2019, which was the Oregon Voting Rights Act, and it provides a way that districts can change their voting in response to what's called a potential violation of the Voting Rights Act. So this potentially would be used if someone came forward and said, "I think the way the Board is voting, the type of voting you're using, is violating the Voting Rights Act." And if a judge found that, then the district could be ordered to go through this mechanism to change. The law allows districts to do it proactively, on their own, to remedy what they might think would be a potential violation. And again, the law goes through a very specific method for doing that that involves a lot of public comment. And if that is the way that that change comes about, it has to, it skips the next board election. So if the Board decided, "We're going to change the way we vote, and we're going to follow the mechanism in the law," it would be effective for the 2025 election. This would not be effective for the 2023. And you can see the timeline up there. There's another option, and that would be if the Board chooses to change voting by resolution. And that change potentially could affect the 2023 election, but only if that change could be communicated to county election officials by July of 2022. Because the other piece for both the zone maps and the type of voting is that information has to go to the county elections, folks, in time for them to make the changes. So again, if we're going to try to change this for the 2023 election, that would have to be to them by July of 2022, which is a pretty fast timeline.
Great. So, let's open it up to questions. If there are any specific questions about the maps and that work. And then I'll come back and talk really briefly about sort of next steps and see if there are any questions about that. So, any questions about the work that PSU's done?
Oh, no, I have no questions about their work. I have a question about, in a season and time when all across the country, votes are trying to be restricted for racist reasons, we know that is what it is. Why in the world would we be looking to change the way that we vote right now? Like, why? I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm one of them people that's transparent, so I'll say it. When I first voted for Obama, I did it because he was black. That was the only reason I did it. I didn't know a whole lot about him, hadn't voted a whole lot of stuff. I looked on a thing, I saw a black man running. I said, "I'm voting for him." I knew what he was about, I didn't know what he stood for. Values, none of that stuff. He was black on the ballot, he had my vote. In other spaces in time, like in these rural spaces that are going to be out there, there might be this one black dude that's sitting out there in the middle of the thing, saying, "I'm the only one out here, and I never see anybody." And then he gets a ballot and says, "There's a black dude on it. I'm going to vote for him." And we're taking away his vote. So now, he has to choose somebody else. So that's, I'm just looking at why. Like, why would we be doing that? No, no, keep the zones, change the zones, do all that. But I think we need to leave it citywide voting, because I feel like every black person should have the opportunity to vote for me.
So, this is the exact conversation we need to have. So, and I am not, I want to just caveat this, I am not in no way an expert or well-versed in this. And I think, as we go forward in this process, one of the things we want to do is partner with some community groups who actually have the deep background of knowledge. I did serve on City Club's committee that looked at the way City Portland votes. And so I learned just a little bit of a surface there that this type of, "You have to live in a zone, but you have to get elected, you know, district-wide or citywide," was rooted, you know, 100 years ago as a very racist practice to essentially say, "We want to dilute the voting power of communities of color." And that we don't want a zone where it might be a high, you know, there might be a lot of black people or brown people in a particular zone. We don't want them to be able to nominate someone and get that person into office. We actually want the entire city to be able to vote, because it dilutes it. Now, I'm just saying that that actually, and Kate, I didn't ask you to research this before. My understanding from that City Club work, there have actually been a number of cases in the South that have challenged us under the Federal Voting Rights Act that have been successful. And that there are many states where the exact type of way that we vote right now has been ruled by the courts to be racist and illegal, and has been required to change. That said, Kate has also found some more recent research, which has shown that in some of these places that vote the way we do, actually minority representation is higher or the same.
Yeah, yeah.
You read through that study, so...
Yes, and I can provide those to the Board. I mean, traditional scholarship would hold that the kind of voting that Portland does tends to have a more racist effect. And they're certainly founded in those types of systems. And that was the goal. There is more recent scholarship. There's a study out of University of San Diego, I believe, from 2019, that looks, I believe, at city council elections in large cities. And they find, with the type of voting that we have for our Board now, minorities are actually overrepresented on Boards. I think the effect on gender is the same. But I can certainly provide those studies and, you know, can do further research and look at those.
Yeah.
But they're interesting to read. I mean, that's, you know, the City Club, as Director Scott said, did a lot of research around those types of voting systems. The consensus was that they should be changed. Again, more recent scholarship is calling that into question.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fascinating policy. We know the system was rooted in racism and white supremacy. We know that. And yet, it's possible the impact more recently actually has been a little bit the reverse. So, you know, so I hear you, and I think this is exactly why we need to partner with some community groups to sort of ask this question, you know, do we want to, you know? And I would say there are other reasons too. I think the diversity of the Board's an important one. The ability in lowering the barriers of entry is also really... So one of the things that I think you hear very consistently from candidates is, "I'm not going to run for School Board, because I can't run with, you know, what is it? 30,000 households or, you know, 300,000 people, something like that." Like, it's a huge barrier in terms of just cost and campaign and organizational whole thing. A smaller district might lower that barrier of entry and make it easier for folks to run. But, sorry, 500,000 total, and I can't remember how many households. But, that said, we need to be careful, because what we think might happen when we make a change, it may, you know, it may not, right? And there's some unknowns there as well.
Well, no, I'm just, so I'm just kind of looking at like where we're at, right? Based on the system that we have, and looking at the diversity of the Board that we have. You know, it's kind of counter... It's kind of counter to what the argument is as far as to change it to zones, because I'm looking at who we are now, right? And like, this has been citywide, we have a good representation of minorities on the Board. So I just worry, well, I worry how that will look by changing to two zones, if you have an area or more zones that have predominantly white folks in a particular zone. Now, I guess, when I look back historically, if this would have been 20 years ago, the zone piece would have been great, because we had a high concentration of African-Americans and minorities in certain areas. Well, with that gone, you know, and the gentrification that happened, and everybody is spread out, how would that go back now to zoning? To when you're talking about like northeast Portland, to where you had a higher percentage of African-Americans or people of color there versus what it is now? And how would that affect people of color getting on the Board that way now versus how it was before? And I don't know who, I know you guys talk about the City Club. Who made up that, of that group who did this kind of census? Was there people of color on there that was talking about that? You know, so I just kind of look at things like that as well. The financial piece, I get the argument, but I know historically, at least Portland Public School Board, hasn't really been a real high entry to run, because there wasn't always a lot of interest. And I don't know, compared to other districts, how much are we spending more versus other places? So I just think about that too. But, I mean, I'm definitely want to, let's learn more about with those, I guess, the consequences, but, you know, kind of the reasons behind both and those different scenarios. Because I think, like, the way we are now is good, and we have a good, you know, relation, I mean, good mix on the Board. I don't know how that would change if we went to a zone piece where there's not a lot of minorities that are in a certain, concentrated in a certain zone anymore.
Yeah, I think that's a really, really important point, particularly in north and northeast Portland experienced a tremendous rate amount of gentrification. And so, I'm a little skeptical about looking at the zoning for the same reasons Director Holland said, that there isn't... Some people are saying like, "Well, it's great, black people can live anywhere in the city." It wasn't always that way. And so, yeah, 25 years, 30 years ago, north-northeast Portland had a huge concentration of black people. And it's not that way anymore. So, yeah, I want to study it a little bit more and find out what the impacts will be. But I'm kind of thinking that the, at large, at least for Portland, Portland's a special place. I think at large, yeah. I mean, so the thing is, we do, Herman and I are in School Board Partners, and we can get that elections information for different districts around the country, find out what they're spending, if they're in different... They're in different, some are real conservative parts of the country, some are very black or very Latinx parts of the country, so we can get a kind of a cross sampling of that, that data.
And, and I know.
Sorry, it's daily, when I could get a chance, let me know.
Please go, yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead, you're doing great.
Interrupt anyone, but it's hard for me to tell when you're stopping, and I'm sure I have a lag. One thing I think is interesting, as we talk about moving to zones versus the citywide election, is, you know, I, we, I know we talk about, you know, my schools, my zone, whatever. But really, you know, I am beholden to all the constituents of the city, being elected by the city. And so, you know, those black voters who maybe live in North Portland are as important to me, right, if I want to get reelected, which I don't, but. I'm not running again. But, so, so I wonder.
That don't give you the right to mistreat me, I hope.
But I think all of us care about all of the kids, not just the kids from the neighborhoods we live in. But I think, you know, there is some wisdom to being elected citywide, and then it, it sort of forces us to be, be responsible to the whole city. But I can see the trade-offs, like Director Scott said, of, it is a barrier, door knocking, you know, all the work, all the money that we raise to do this campaigning is challenging. So I think there are some definite trade-offs in both styles, and I'm glad we're having this conversation about what that might look like if we do change or if we stay the same.
Thank you, Director Lowry, for that. So I know, I talked with Director Scott before, and I know we was kind of talking about that the school district could, as far as campaign financing, right, allocate money for campaigns, if we're talking about that barrier for folks to be able to run. Are those options as well? And I would like to know what those options are and how we could explore what those options could be.
Yeah. I mean, what I will say is, yes, it's an option. It, it will take some time in terms of just, you know, what legally are we able to do? What kind of program do we want to create? And then, of course, the funding for it is, is a huge issue as well. But I'm, I'm very, so I guess what I would say is, like I said earlier, I put that in a future bucket, but a very important future bucket. And when I say future, it doesn't need to be way out, it can be just, you know, but it's not, it's not going to be by July, put it that way, right?
But that's, that's more complex than, I got you, Gary. That's more complex than just imposing campaign finance limits, which we could do relatively easily. And personally, I think that's something we should take a hard look at, because that would address the barrier to entry issues that, that we've heard from candidates, if they know that somebody's going to outspend them by a huge amount. And, you know, be one way to approach that problem. I would totally support that. I think it's long overdue.
Great. Any other comments, Jackson, Director?
No, it was just more a suggestion for a future bucket to expand the voting rights of the student board member, student representative, I should say, to full voting rights. There's scenarios in California and Maryland where, especially in Maryland, every single student board member has full voting rights, is in every executive session. Votes on budget, personnel, superintendent. So just as a future bucket for consideration on how that could work.
And I, and I'm going with that, so would that mean we would need another student council representative on here as well? Because it wouldn't have to be eight, I mean, nine, wouldn't have to be eight.
No, there was a case in Maryland, and they said eight is fine, because then it raises the minimum you need to pass anything to five. So four would still not pass, so a tie wouldn't pass anything.
Liz, are those changes, are those statutory with the state? Is that where we'd need to make those changes, or is that something we as a board could decide?
I believe you'd have to make them at a statutory basis at the state legislature. Currently, the statutes define the composition of the board, and it does not include an unelected student representative.
Yeah.
I just, I, it's not that I don't support that, Jackson, I just want to make sure, like, when we were talking about the ADA plan and the money, that we're, we're talking about the actual barrier, whether that's the capacity or that this is a state issue that we need to change.
Yeah, the barrier is also, I would theoretically be elected by people under eighteen, and they're technically not allowed to vote in elections, so, yeah.
So just, I had a question about that, and then just a comment. So is the sixteen to eighteen-year-olds, that has to be a statutory change? Like, we couldn't just, you know, in our jurisdiction, couldn't do that?
I don't know. We could research that. It's a, yeah, in terms of what it would take. So again, these are great ideas, and I, I keep, because again, I sort of view this election task force as, what are we going to do right now? And then maybe make it a recommendation for a future work plan that might go.
So just a, just a comment. I. Fascinating work. I really appreciate the work that PSU did to sort of set, set it up, because I think it provides some good choices. I guess one of my just overarching thoughts, and I don't have a sort of bias one way or the other, right now. But it's more around the lines, because it is really confusing to people when there's not a clear, like, you're on, you know, like, really distinct lines or it moves around. Because when I try and describe to people what the zone is, like, at least for my zone, it's so complicated. There's not an easy, you know, here are the, here are the four sides to the, the square. So I, I do like some of the cleanup that's happened, because I just think that makes it easier, because even though we're, we are elected by the city, people still think you're their. If you're in their zone, if they're in your zone, they still think you're, you're their person, which you still are, because you run them to the grocery store and everything else. So I would just make, you know, the more that we can try and keep, I, I love the fact that some of the proposals, I think, provide greater equitable balance across the district. At least more on the, on the east side, and in North Portland. But to try and make it at least understandable, because I think otherwise people have a hard time figuring out, like, where's my zone and who's my person and where do I run from?
Right, and, and I think there's, it's interesting to me, because we do serve and represent all students. But if we had to just respond to constituents in our zone, wouldn't that be, that'd be about a fifth of the email that comes in. It would be actually manageable.
Yep, okay, so this was very helpful. The Elections Task Force meets again, I think on Monday, so, I think so.
Yeah, it is Monday.
Yeah, Monday at five. This was great feedback that we will take back. I'm hearing some definite concern and, and, and a little bit of skepticism about moving too quickly down this road. So I think we'll talk about that more and report back as a future, as a, at committee meetings, and then I'm sure we'll be back at the board with a final sort of proposal. Because we do want to move pretty quickly on the census changes regardless. So I think with that.
And those are not as timely, just, I just want people to understand the timeline for the, just the realignment or A and B proposals. Is summer, or if we don't address the voting, then we wouldn't need to get those to the county until the end of the year, calendar year.
Then again, no reason to delay if we know what we're going to do, but that's helpful to know on a timeline. Okay, so more to come. Thank you for the conversation tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Scott. We have one last item. That's the second reading of policies. We're going to consider the second reading of the nondiscrimination anti-harassment policy, 1.80.020P. Director Brum Edwards, will you please introduce the nondiscrimination's anti-harassment policy before I ask for a motion?
Thank you, Chair DePass. So, this is, we had a first reading, and we, this was adding language to, as it was a policy revision. And we, we did actually get some public comment that came in, and at the last committee meeting that we had, we, we discussed it. And we also got some advice on, from our committee staff, the General Counsel of PPS, about the proposed, the, the public comment and the proposed changes. And this is, it's an anti-discrimination and harassment, anti-harassment policy. And the recommendation that we had received in public comment was to add to the categories of where we prohibit discrimination and harassment was in athletic offerings and uniforms. And some individuals in the school community had pointed out just sort of how that played out for some of our student athletes. And in our discussions, we made a decision not to change it, because the language already includes the words in all, the district prohibits discrimination and harassment in all of its programs. So that would be inclusive athletics. So I've communicated with the people who thread public comment to tell them that their, the issue they're concerned about is already included in the revisions. And it's also, there's been a conversation just affirming that with the district athletic director. So we didn't, we did get public comment, we did not change it from the original revisions that were made and that we had the first reading. So with that, I think we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Director Green moves. Director Holland seconds. The adoption of Resolution 6541, is there any board discussion? Director Lowry, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution 65, I'm sorry, 6451, resolution to adopt revised nondiscrimination anti-harassment policy, 1.80.020P. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Resolution 645.
Student representative?
Well, Resolution 6451 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Weinberg unofficially voting.
Yes.
But please, Director Constan, please.
Sorry, Michelle.
No, that's no worries. Let's see, do we have any other, I'm sorry, I thought we had.
I have some other business.
Other business?
An addendum to the, it's very brief, Director Scott. An addendum to the superintendent's report. It was brought to my attention by a student who was in the audience earlier, who texted me when you were bragging on the Cleveland wrestling team that the Lincoln Girls and Boys won the state championships in swimming. You forgot to note that. So I told this student that I would dutifully pass that on.
Thank you so much for bringing that up, Director Constan. Clearly, that wasn't a full accounting of all of ours, and thank you for bringing it up. Congratulations.
State championships don't come along every day.
Maybe we'll have them out here next.
Or Cleveland being eleven straight wins for PIL, for Cleveland wrestling?
Yeah, that's pretty awesome. Thank you. We have one last item of business before we go and before we lose Director Scott here. He's going to start packing very soon.
You about to lose Director Green, too.
I have had my camera off by standing up stretching.
It's a very brief update. I've promised brevity.
From the committee, for the climate policy, so we did get some comments, and we took them, if you're not on the committee, this is an important thing. We took them into consideration. We have decided at this point not to make any changes to the policy. Obviously, the public comment period is still open. If we get some more substantive change, we'll revisit that. But for those who aren't on the committee, if you have amendments or you're interested in what's happening, please reach out or come to our next committee meeting, because we will be voting on it if we don't get any more substantive public comment.
We are adjourned.